Okay, good evening, everyone. This is the Tuesday, June 20th, June 14th, excuse me, 2022 regular meeting of the Flemingsboro Planning Board. This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, both adequate and electronic notice of this meeting has been provided by way of publication in the Hunter County Democrat and Curry Area's newspapers on our about March 17th, 2022. In addition, notice of the meeting was posted on the door of the Borough Fountains Municipal Building located here at 38 Park Avenue, and any handicapped or testable entrances there too. Posted on the municipal website, provided to the municipal clerk and distributes all persons, if any requesting copies of the same. This meeting is being recorded with both audio and video and may be rebroadcast. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing, but must be maintained at all times. I can ask everyone please to rise as you are able for the flag salute. Let's read it to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Got him in the nick of time. Please call the roll.
Hey, Brad. Here. Mr. Parker is esteemed. Mr. Campion?
Here.
Mr. Dossen?
Here.
Mrs. Engler?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
And Mr. Bundy is excused. Ms. Giffen?
Yeah.
Ms. Weitzman?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Mr. Levitt?
Here.
Ms. Kaczynski?
Here.
Mr. Clarica?
Here.
Ms. McManus?
Here.
And Mr. Chapman is excused.
Okay, Karen, we go over conflicts?
Absolutely. Is there any matter on the agenda this evening that any board member feels that they have a personal or community area interest in or any other reason that they cannot bring an unbiased decision regards to the matter?
I'm going to state through the record that I have a conflict with item eight on the agenda, Public Hearing Family Promise. I know a number of both board members do, but if we could go through those just again on the record.
I'll be recusing myself from the same item due to be on number. I'm recusing myself from item number eight as I am within 200 feet.
And I'm recusing myself from item number eight as I am within 200 feet.
Can we get to that point everybody can sit down? Thanks.
Okay, so as we do at the beginning of each of our meetings, I know we've got some folks who are not used to our meeting. I will ask if your open up chairs were fine. Just make sure that we keep the width of the carpet of the runner there is kind of fire code there. And anyone who wants to be in the meeting has to be able to come into the meeting space. If we need extra chairs, we can put some more outside as long as we don't exceed the occupancy limit of the meeting room. Okay, first item on the agenda is time for public comments on items that are not before the board this evening. Any member of the public wishing to speak, if you are in person, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. If you are on Zoom, you can use the raised hand function. Okay, seeing none in person or online, did we receive any correspondence? Okay, item two on the agenda is comments from the mayor.
So I have a few things discussed last night on a console by now. It's both a RDA redevelopment agreement with HBC, Hoboken, HBC Liberty Village LLC was approved. I wanted to go through some of those highlights. It's going to be built in two phases on the mall site. We're looking at 160 owner occupied stacked townhomes. Thirteen of them will be dedicated to lower moderate income. Three of them will be built out into four bedrooms. They will be rentals and they will be a group assisted special needs housing for those individuals who require it. So that's a total of 12 units for special needs individuals. On the other side, on the parking lot side, we're looking at 225 rentals. Fifteen percent of them will be affordable per the Borough ordinance. Other highlights will be the donation of the Polo Building to the Borough. We're used as Borough Hall. Construction of a community park and playground off of Brown Street. That developer will be building that. He's working with the Brown Street residents to design a playground that will be open to the public and all Borough residents. However, the developer will establish escrow to maintain and repair any needs over time. And that's a 30 year escrow that will be on there as well. There will be a $1 million donation to an infrastructure fund per phase as they're approved and building permit area issue for a potential total of 2 million, assuming that the E.P. approves phase two. And phase two for that parking lot is in floodplain issue. So whether or not the E.P. ever approves that is kind of up in the air. The developer does pay water and sewer connection fees. However, those fees are waived on the affordable units. There will be a donation of a future well site, ideally on an existing, on the existing site. But if not on the existing site, the developer will purchase another site to place that well and that will be on one of the adjacent properties. Developer pays all Borough expenses as to be expected. The developer also pays and constructs all internal infrastructure. And finally, only 10% of the units can be owned by any one entity. And that's in an effort to keep, as we all know, there's a lot of corporations coming in and snapping up rental housing and it's creating a bit of a housing crisis. So we put that restriction into the redevelopment agreement to keep that from happening. Next up, there would be plenty of opportunity to comment. There'll be a site plan that will first go to the redevelopment committee, then it will go to council, and then it will come to planning board as well as a financial agreement. We are working with Beacon Planning on that and that will inform the negotiations on the pilot and financial agreement on that site as well. So those two, two things will offer lots of opportunities to comment if you'd like. Additionally, I am meeting with Altis. They are opening up one of the medical cannabis shops. It's over in the shops of Flemington on Rayville Avenue. They will be looking to transition that shop per a change in state policy regarding cannabis to recreational. They will have to come in for a site plan approval, even though they'll already be opening and open and operating as medical, but in order to convert, they'll have to come to the, to the planning board for that as well. Additionally, I'll be sending out an email to all planning board members. I'll go to Jeff and he'll distribute. The New Jersey Redevelopment Authority would like to come in and offer some free training for anyone interested. Elected officials or planning board members to talk about redevelopment policies that the state of New Jersey has regarding redevelopment areas, non-redevelopment areas, and all of that as well. So that'll be coming up for board members to come in. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Item three is council comments. Mr. Parker is not here this evening, so we'll move on to item four, which is HPC. I do not see the HPC chair here. And where do I see him online? I don't see anything else from those.
There was one resolution.
One resolution came through. Yeah, but other than that, I think that was it for HPC. Item five on the agenda is approval of minutes from May 24th, 2022 regular meeting. Those have been previously distributed. Can I get a motion in a second?
So move, Cook.
Drive a little second. Any corrections or clarification of the minutes?
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Man Driver?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Abstain.
Mr. Dossen?
Yes.
Mrs. Engler?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Abstain.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Ms. Go?
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item six on our agenda this evening is an informal discussion for Paramount Realty for members of the public. We, anyone who wants 15 minutes of the board's time to talk informally before an application is submitted, just to get a feel of what's going on, we give everyone the chance to do that. You don't need to push the button, you're good. And this is for block 48, lot 6, 285 US Route 202, or as what everybody knows it as, the Country Griddle Site.
Correct.
Correct. If you could please identify yourself for the members of the public.
Sure, thank you very much. I'm Greg Edelman here on behalf of Paramount Realty. I'm here this evening with Matt Sharrow from Dynamic Engineering. He's our project engineer. And as you had just stated, we are here to talk about the redevelopment of the former Country Griddle. Paramount is the new owner of the property and is proposing to redevelop the property into two medical uses, Aspen Dental and City MD. There is really no, very, very minimal building changes being proposed. There are some minor site plan changes in terms of the parking lot configuration and ADA accessibility being proposed. There's no signage changes being proposed. The existing pylon sign will be retained and then there'll just be new panels placed in the existing structure. And then any wall signage that may come for the users will be handled by those individual users by Aspen Dental and City MD through a separate permit application. We've explained to them that they'll be required to comply with ordinances or otherwise they'll have to come before the board again seeking variance. So we're not handling the signage as a quick and short line. So I don't know if Matt can just do a quick presentation as to what's being proposed and we're happy to field any questions from the Borough staff.
Yeah, what would you say for members of the public who might be remote? Did these get put on the website or no? Because this is towards the board, right? It's informal. Yeah, it's an informal, just want to make sure.
All right, so this is, there's two views on the concept you're looking at in front of you. The view on the left, on your, on your left is the existing conditions. See the existing restaurant here with all the parking beyond, behind it? And then this is what we're proposing. So as you can see, there's not much difference from what's being proposed and what's existing today. The bulk of what's happening is at the front of the building. There's two little alcoves in the front of the building existing to get into the front door. So they're, they're going to be filling those in to try to square out the building a little bit. And then what's going to happen is the parking along the front of the building is going to be removed to increase that sidewalk that's there. It's like less than a four foot sidewalk there. So what we're, we're going to increase that by two feet to make it six feet. And then we're going to put the ADA stalls at either side of the building. So we're just restriping, basically restriping three of the existing stalls into two new ADA stalls. That's really the, the whole bulk of it. It's not, it's nothing crazy. So, and then I do have an elevation of the proposed building just so you guys kind of get it. It's Aspen and City, City, City MD.
This is the 202 frontage.
Yep.
And obviously you said that they're, they're, they're going to come for their own signage. So this is just a depiction of what it might look like.
Yeah, that's, yes, of course. This is very preliminary relations for the uses.
And then overall, the parking complies on the set. We actually have access park for the two proposed users.
And the use is permitted in Iowa Retail District. I think that when our code official was, had spoken to you a few weeks, maybe a couple months ago, he, he thought it would be good to come here just in case there were things that the engineer wanted to make sure was in the application. If there's any other things we wanted to make sure, and for members of the public, just to, to help move things along. So I don't know if, we gotta slide the mic down if you don't mind.
Yeah, I mean, originally we were just looking at a permit submission, but we're happy to come in obviously to have this discussion
Yeah.
and talk about the use, especially since we're going from a single restaurant users to medical users.
Well, if, if it's going to come before the board in any way, shape, or form, you're going to have to obviously document ADA compliance with the sidewalk and the ramps
Correct.
and the spaces and whatnot.
Correct.
I suspect, we look at this in detail, but I suspect parking layout that's out there is probably not compliant dimensionally with the ordinance standards. Now, there's a whole lot you can do about that. But it looks like the one in the rear, you might be able to do the striping a little bit differently. Maybe that would be an improvement over what you have. You said you have excess parking for this particular unit?
Matt's done the analysis.
A lot of excess parking or?
There's, yeah, there's, there's 84 parking spaces. So for that City MD, it's, it's a two per thousand slots.
Okay. Again, if it's going to come before the board, your plan will reflect, you know, the details of what you're doing. And is there any, I haven't been on that site quite well. Is there any maintenance required for the parking lot? Is it, are you going to do it if you can go resurfacing or anything?
Hi, Eric.
He was trying to hide. And I told him it wasn't going to hurt.
So we are, as part of our turnover, we, we looked at the property. We think during the acquisition that was in relatively good shape. But after construction, we always go back through and we look, they'll definitely be clean. The striker will be crisp, the ball sign will be crisp. We'll address anything that fails or that.
You don't anticipate any, no resurfacing or anything?
No.
Again, if, if it's coming before the board, those are the things we'll be looking at.
Well, I think part of the, part of what Jeff Klein was, was wondering was whether or not this needed to come for, for site plan or not. And, and we wanted to just get some more information, have the opportunity to talk it through.
Right.
And if you're, the one thing that I noticed was signage. And what you were saying is that signage is going to be handled by the tenants and you're not proposing to touch the existing signage. It, the burden for them to come in for sign approval is going to be on them and not on you.
That's correct.
So I think that, that's one thing that would not necessitate site plan. I don't know if there's anything else that would.
I would know, like I said, if they, if they came before the board, those are the things we'll be looking at.
Yeah.
You know, if Jeff's going to handle the ADA, if the board feels it doesn't have to come for you, then obviously they're not going to be looking at anything.
Yeah.
And, and just, I know you mentioned that you were going to keep the existing signage. And again, when, when your clients or your tenants come, that sign, that pylon sign is incredibly dated. I mean, it's got the coachman's lamp on top and the Country Griddle. I mean, I, I'm not sure from a signage perspective, and I don't want to tail wag the dog. It's not really appropriate in today's standard for, for to just reskin it with a modern City MD and an Aspen Dental with hints of Country Griddle in the background.
I mean, we, we, we could look at it.
It doesn't complement your elevation.
No, not at all.
No, I mean, it isn't, but you know, we were trying to make it as seamless as possible in order to be able to get the building.
Like I said, I'm not sure what, what, if, if there's DOT issues without. All I'm saying is the sign is, is, is probably 50 years old there.
I mean, we'll have to, I was going to say, I think it is older than that.
Yeah.
We'll have to look at it. I mean, obviously, we were just trying to do what we needed to do in order to get through for building permit, in order to meet our tenant delivery requirements.
Sure.
Doing the minimum that's needed is one thing that I expect is a new.
Such a nice elevator.
Yeah, I know, it's a nice eleva, it's, it's, you know, it's very preliminary. It's a nice elevation. You're, you're a new member of the community. We want to welcome you. You know, the, I think my big, my biggest concern is, is actually the, the parking lot itself. I don't see any like crosswalks there marked for the, for the handicaps, the, you know, to cross. When, oh, there's going to be little old ladies and men being like completely mowed down there as they pull into there. It, you know, it's, it's pretty, that's a really tight radius and on that right side. I'm not sure if, you, you need to really think about those two ADAs on the right and definitely some nice crisp striping. But to be honest with you, the thing that, that highlights the most is you've got extra parking. It's not always assignedated, but the, but the site is dated as well. So flopping a nice new building is one thing, but cleaning up the sign, cleaning up the, the site is, is, you know, cleaning it up is nice. But what about getting rid of some of the parking spaces and adding some, some
Yeah, that, that was.
site trees along the, along, we do have an ordinance for that and can we obligate them to come in just to, to be doing that? Because they do have a site plan change. I mean, we could be, we could be wishy and make it come just for that.
So, so that was. So that was why we were trying to, to try to do this as a form of figure.
I understand.
No, we, we were trying to figure out what, where, where, where the board was feeling like and.
It's like there's not a lot of trying.
So the, the one, the one thing that I would say is the, the, the parking, the angled parking on the north boundary of the property, which is on the right if you're looking at it. Certainly for anyone who uses that site, like, you know, back when restaurant was at full capacity on a Sunday morning, it's a very tight drive aisle with the angle parking in the curve of the building. And if you've got excess parking, certainly you might want to consider taking some of those spots out if you don't need them just simply as a way to improve site circulation and the, and the site. And again, that's just a restriping kind of question. Yeah, I mean.
And breaking up the part of the gas.
Yeah, and maybe some landscaping there. The, the other thing that we've always wanted to encourage is cross access and especially in this part of, of town with that triangle with Rayville and 202. You know, connecting to other, to the other lots has always been something that's, has been a challenge. And I know that the, right now, there's not connectivity to the restaurant to the south. There's not connectivity to the site, to the old Tripock site, which is kind of southwest. And there's really, there is sort of a not really access to where Chick-fil-A is. So those changes would necessitate site plan. And I understand the reluctance to do that. But if you want to talk about improving the site going forward, especially from a traffic perspective, having cross access is something that, that this board has been encouraging for a while. And if it's, I think, and that would also require you talking to the neighbors to see if they're interested. And if they're not interested, then that's the end of the game. I understand that, but, but it is something that we've been trying to encourage.
And you also have a lot of pedestrian access, especially with the medical. I wouldn't doubt that some people walk. So that's definitely something you need to make sure that you're addressing. And if it connects to the back or the side, we even encourage that from your other neighbors. There is issues with, yeah, can I connect through my neighborism? But you might want to talk to your neighbors. It's, it's a, a good opportunity that would benefit the business.
What's the board, how do they think?
But Jeff, from a procedural perspective, right? They don't need legally to come in front of this board.
That's what I'm trying to look at.
I, I, I don't hope.
So we don't, we.
We sure like it to fix things up.
You know, if, if. But they're not coming in for signs.
Right.
Then I don't think they trigger site plan.
I, I don't know that.
But we're, but we're not 100% sure, which is why, which is why we wanted to hear what you were talking about and then we can look at it and figure out.
Well, the two foot times the width of the building is the, essentially the site plan change with four.
Yeah, but sidewalk, sidewalk and striping is colored, is colored, that's, Jeff can do that.
Right, so.
Yeah, same here. But, but we understand what you're saying. I mean, we're not saying we, we wouldn't want to improve the signage, especially the existing signage. We worry about losing the right to have it. So there's a delicate balance there. If we're able to look at making a change, but yet being able to maintain it, then sure, that's something we'll look at. Clearly, what we're trying to do here isn't the minimal. We, we're basically redoing the entire building. I think the minimal would be just reoccupying.
I meant the site as minimal.
Yes.
And then, and then site wise.
We, no, and I understand your, I understand your comment because I would do the same thing sitting in your, your position.
Thank you.
When an old thing comes in and it can be refreshed or spruced up, you know, I'd be remiss not to say that. So I understand. I mean, a lot of it, we were focused on the ADA access to the site. The circulation comment's a very good one. I mean, if we have excess parking, we really don't necessarily need to have all the angled parking coming in on the side. That's another good one. I mean, so we, we can look at some of these as we're putting together what we would consider to be a permit plan.
If you don't mind, right? Yeah, that's one of the, so there's two other factors that are driving this. The City MD and Aspen, you can do us specifically to target this location. They wanted this project and we promised them we'll work with you because we represent a lot of places. The applicants or those tenants have a timeframe on which they have to open. So we basically got together as a team to figure out what we can do to make the site better, but still deliver on their timeframe. So we were purposely trying to do something that's in compliance. And one of the things that Mr. Sharrow did early on is he did not like anybody who spends at Country Griddle, you know, they just park where they want in the front. And he did not like that from the beginning. He was adamant about improving that. So Matt, if you want to show how you improve the circulation on that, it would actually eliminate, I don't know if it was even legal parking. So it eliminated. No, but.
No, that's a great.
No, we, 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 we like it, yes.
Yes.
So there's no parking, parking in the front?
Yeah.
There's almost no drive out, it's less than.
Oh, no, no, it's, it's a disaster. We, we all know.
So I, I don't like it. Now it gives you actually two-way, two-way access. So if you come in and you leave, you're like, oh, man, you know, forgot, you know, something in the, you can actually come back around and park.
Yeah, no, 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 that's definitely an improvement and we appreciate that because it was.
Doesn't that trigger site plan?
This is str, it's strapping. He's not doing anything.
But the circulation is changing.
Not really.
Is there, is it going to be an entrance from the back?
That's what I was asking about last time.
Yeah.
No, they all answer to the, the lobbies in the front.
So somebody'd have to walk all the way around the building in order to access it?
Which is why we kept the angle parking on the sides.
Understood.
To facilitate people to walk.
We want to get this through quick. I mean, that's the, it's, it's.
I sense that.
And it's, it's an easy fix. We just want you guys to be good new neighbors and, and clean it up.
Well, the other thing is
Yeah.
that we would be willing to go on record saying that if neighbors had plans or if there was something coming through, you guys need our cooperation. We're very successful and we are absolutely willing to. No, that's, that's appreciable. That's appreciable.
Let us take a look and see what we can do and then come back to staff and say, can they still be under the permit application?
Yeah, no, and that, and that is.
That's from what we can do on that.
Do you need anything else feedback wise?
No, it's been very helpful. I appreciate it and thank you for fitting us on the.
No, no problem. All right, thank you. All right. Thank you. We are up to item seven on the agenda, which is the continuation of the public hearing. If you're going to talk, please take it outside. Continuation of the public hearing for Captiva Main Street LLC, block five, lots one and two, which is continued from March 8th, 22nd, April 12th and March 24th, 2022. Karen, you spoke to their counsel.
I have, yes. And I've confirmed that they are asking for adjournment to the June 28th meeting, at which time I know where we last left it. The board had directed me to prepare some potential conditions. I'll be doing that, circulating those, but they have asked for that to be adjourned to the June 28th.
Okay, so what we're going to do is we're going to continue the public hearing for Captiva Main Street LLC, block five, lots one and two, continue to the June 28th, 2022 meeting at 7:00 PM in this room. No further notice will be given.
Are we, can we just check on attendance on that meeting? Because it's, I know I won't be here. I, I'm not sure if I can call in, just want to make sure we have enough.
For, I think we're okay, but we can.
Is everybody else okay? That's here?
I'm seeing.
The 28th?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Good. Okay, thank you. So that's going to be carried to the 28th. Item eight on the agenda is the public hearing for Family Promise of Hunter County in block 19, lots seven and eight, an application for use variance. As we discussed before, we have a number of board members, including myself, who are, who have a conflict and need to set the zoom up for it. We need to recuse themselves. Hold on. So, Mr. Greenberg, the computer in front of you is going to say join as a panelist. Please click on okay. All right, you can turn the camera on or off. So Matt, that would be great.
You're looking, you know how to do Zoom.
It's two and a half years.
I was just going to say.
All right. So I'm going to step down, but before we continue, we want to just let everybody know that when we had to complete this determination, Mr. Bundy was chairing. Mr. Bundy had a last, the very last minute family emergency. And unfortunately, I'll have to hear, Mr. Hill is going to sit in the chair. And we do have five board members. Mr. Levitt, Mr. Hill, Mr. Campion, Ms. Weitzman, and Ms. Giffen. You have five.
And none are Borough Council members, correct?
No, 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 Mayor left and the councilman was.
Yes.
The board is out here, so I think they're good. Great, all right, so.
Hey, Jeff, will you be back for chair rooms and bills and where you?
I'm not leaving. I, I.
Okay, I was.
No, 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 someone's got.
It's muted, sure.
He doesn't need to, no, you leave it muted because the microphone there is, is capturing everybody. Right, I just want to make sure Karen, now you can hear Mr. Greenberg, right? Yes, thank you. Yeah, we have chair items to come back to, so.
Almost 30 years of this is the first time I've had a public discussion.
Well, you're well practiced.
I was just going to say.
Really well studied, understood.
Mr. Carter, a few other people that we've worked together a lot on this and it's going to accept everything, help that I can get from our attorney with regard to this because this is a part that we have fun. Are we going to start?
Yes, so we are next item on the agenda, as the chairman indicated, is Public Hearing Family Promise of 78, block 19, lots seven and eight. You are on.
Thank you. The board members both present and virtually. Stephen Groenberg determined Flemington on behalf of the applicant Family Promise of Hunter County. They are the applicant.
He did.
Has been made.
Hold on one second. Anybody remotely have any questions? I'm sure it's something.
No, that was me because at one point he went, he did go silent for a little bit. So I wasn't sure if that was him touching the button, but now I can hear.
You're okay now you can hear, okay.
I can hear.
And he just confirmed that all the proofs have been provided and everything is in order?
Yes, the receipts match the certified list and I defer to you as far as, as, as content, but those were published, you know, had to be developed within 10 days prior to the public hearing as well as the mail receipts.
Yes, Mr. Groenberg was kind enough to remind me of the. Yes, Mr. Groenberg was kind enough to remind me of the property a bit prior to publication, so I would confirm that everything is in order. Board has jurisdiction, acts against board of adjustment, and uh, thank you.
Great. When I went to law school, I kind of hoped that I would do things as a lawyer that would help people, that would be good things. And I've done applications as a land use lawyer that have been pretty good for the community and I've been a board attorney that have had applications that have presented that have been pretty good for the community. I've never had an application like this, which is just so heartwarmingly good for the community. The Family Promise of Hunter County um does remarkable things to help families that are displaced. And it's transitional housing that they're proposing to get people back up on their feet that have had problems for whatever reason that might be. We're asking to convert the annex building of the Cavalry Episcopal Church into a transitional housing, supervised transitional housing for displaced families. Properties located in the single family residence zone. Families stay together in safe home-like shelters and transition into permanent housing. And their goal is neighbors helping makers. We are here tonight because technically we need a use variance. I think arguably we don't need a use variance because this is a uh house of worship property that um is is in conjunction with the uh religious use that's a part of this property. I think it fits within those goals and purposes of a religious institution, but we've been advised that we need a use variance. So we're asking for the use variance tonight. The other interesting thing about the borough's ordinances is that if this was just a community shelter that helped people uh who were victims of domestic violence, it would be a permitted use. If this was just a community shelter that helped people with mental disabilities, it'd be a permitted use. But because this does not specifically fit within those categories, technically, it's not a permitted use under ordinance. But there's no difference of what the service is and and what we are proposing here. The um, the annex building looks like a house. We're not proposing any changes. It's gonna still look like a house, but it's gonna be able to provide supervised transitional housing for displaced families, part of the church, church's goals of serving the community. I have three witnesses this evening. Um, Morelle White, who's the senior warden of the Cavalry Episcopal Church, will be my first witness. Then Angela Fields is the executive director of Family Promise of Hunter County. And then I'm gonna finish it up with John Madden, a professional planner, to present our planning testimony. So I, we can either swear them all in at once or bring them in one at a time.
Let's swear them all at once?
Yeah.
And I'll also swear in our board professional as well. So there's John, Morelle. Uh, do you swear the testimony about to give the scores and truth of the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
And first, I'm gonna call Ms. Weitz.
Of course, I picked the seat that's the.
Steve, do you have any displays or anything that are gonna use?
I do have my little phone drive here to be able to uh show the board photographs of the site and um anything else we need. We're gonna, I have them broken up into exhibits that were uh not exhibit. Material that was provided with the application and then I have three separate exhibits that probably Ms. Madden will make reference to.
All right, wonderful. So why don't we mark as exhibit A one, the application and all supporting documentation. I'll mark as A two, the proofs that were submitted in connection with the notice and the publication. And then this will be documented A three for your next exhibit.
And now I'm gonna have to redo my digital numbers, but that's okay. Ms. Weitz, why don't you tell the board what your position is with the Cavalry Episcopal Church?
Uh, I happen to be the senior warden of the vestry, which is governing body of Cavalry Episcopal Church. Episcopal churches are run by vestries and clergy teams. We are presently in the process of transition. The last uh clergy person, Father Nathan Ritter, left back in uh August of twenty twenty one and we have used a supply priest since. And as such, um, that is the reason why I'm here. Otherwise, you would have got a priest here.
And I understand that the congregation has been located in Flemington since eighteen forty one.
Correct. We have been in Flemington since eighteen forty one, originally using the same property that the Presbyterian Church was using.
And is it, uh, when did the the church relocate to this particular site?
In the eighteen fifties, uh, it was considered outside of town, but that's where we moved.
And so and you've been there since the eighteen fifties?
Correct.
And the sanctuary was constructed when?
Uh, in the eighteen eighties, I believe.
And the annex office and Sunday school classroom was a property that's next to the church and the um sanctuary, correct?
Correct.
And it's essentially, looks like a single family dwell?
It does.
And uh, when did you acquire that? When did the church acquire that?
Nineteen sixties, I think.
So approximately sixty years ago, correct? And that's been under the offices of the Cavalry Episcopal Church for decades now.
Correct.
And what does the church use the property for, for the the decades that it's had it?
We were using it as office space and Sunday school space. Um, so that was, we had Sunday school space upstairs. Uh, there were two bathrooms in it that were used regularly. We we had meetings there. Sometimes our A A groups met there, um, and then they eventually moved over to the parish hall.
And the the Cavalry Episcopal Church, tell me what, besides your religious beliefs and and services, what community service activities do you uh participate in?
Uh, it's quite extensive, actually. So uh, some of the things that we've done are the Seas Institute, which is located in Newark. We knit and crochet uh goodie bags or blessing bags for those uh who are um seafarers. Um, we support the Super Bowl of Caring. Uh, our youth group does that every year in January. Uh, that money's go back to a variety of um organizations in the community who need it. We have had A A meetings at Cal uh Cavalry for decades. I can't even imagine. I don't even know when it started, but during the pandemic, when the hospital and other locations closed, Cavalry said you could be at at Cavalry. You couldn't be inside because our diocese wouldn't allow it, but we allowed them to use the um parking lots and that is six days a week at seven o'clock in the morning and Monday evenings at uh eight o'clock at night.
And those were people uh in for A A and I I think also N A, narcotics, synonymous and alcoholics.
Absolutely.
And those are people with substance abuse uh difficulties that were meaning to help themselves.
Correct, correct.
Is that part of your uh church philosophy to participate, make yourself your uh facilities available to those type of groups?
Absolutely. Uh, some of the other things that we have done are uh support the food pantry and prayers for the food pantry going behind Walmart. We would, every November, possess down Broad Street, um, uh, actually carloads of groceries that were going to the food pantry. We uh provide, we've worked for many years with Family Promise. We um support Rock City, which takes place in May. Um, this past year, we brought in about fifteen hundred dollars worth of uh revenue in the form of of um donations uh that we are giving to a family promise to use for the homeless. Uh, we support their Christmas gifts. Uh, so we adopt two or three families and then uh provide them gifts. We have an ornament tree that we do every year for the same purpose, providing things to be underprivileged. Uh, our youth group does blessing bags that are given to a variety of organizations. Anytime that we are making money either through cookie sales or other activities, uh, that money is going back towards figuring out how we can help in the form of.
So during the pandemic, the past couple of years, Family Promise has been involved in in trying to help families that have been displaced for any number of reasons, correct?
Correct.
And all of the different um churches, synagogues and 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 different religious affiliations have been trying to help uh and participate as part of Family Promise, correct?
Correct.
And uh, one of the things that uh didn't allow your group to be uh to allow people to stay on site is the fact that you didn't have a shower, correct?
Is the fact that we didn't have a shower.
So so how did it come to be that um this annex building became available for Family Promise?
Well, uh, when the pandemic took place, we contracted, so we left the annex and went back into the parish hall, leaving this building there. And uh, we were trying to figure out how we could help the community in any way, shape or form. Um, we have some very good parishioners who then uh felt that uh some upgrades could be made to bathrooms. And uh, when Father Nathan Ritter was still there, he'd had conversations, understanding that Family Promise was having a that it was no longer feasible to have uh um help the families the way they were. So uh, Father Ritter then proceeded to have a conversation with Family Promise to see how we may be able to use the annex. At that time, um, we then asked our parishioners if anybody was willing and we have several contractors on who are part of our congregation, who said that they could repurpose the downstairs bathroom to a three piece. So it went from a two-piece toilet and sink to a three-piece. So it's a shower, toilet and sink.
So the goal here was always is fair to say that as part of Cavalry Church's, the Episcopal Church's mission to help with displaced families, it, this created an opportunity to continue that.
Yes.
And even in a more meaningful way.
Yes.
So the way that the annex was used previously, you had Sunday school classes and offices.
Correct.
Family Promise is going to have um up to four families and two staff members there, and they're gonna need some minimal parking. How did you arrange the parking?
Um, we have uh several spots within our own parking lot, so it's not on the streets. Uh, and we are going to uh have assigned five parking spots specifically to Family Promise that would allow for staff and up to three additional spots for individuals who have um cars. But we have a large enough parking lot in order to accommodate an additional car or two if necessary.
Okay, but recognizing that this is up to four families who are displaced, many of whom don't have cars, that this is not a concern of your spirit, so.
It's not.
And the uh level of activity on the church is limited to certain hours, so it's not going to cause a problem for the neighborhood?
It isn't, and we've also spoken to the A A group that meets, uh, it's a, it's a rather large group that meets Mondays through Saturdays. So they have been made aware of it and they don't see that there's a problem with it either.
I'm gonna just try to figure this out, how to uh get into the.
Do we have to?
You need to do something on your computer.
I'm sorry, I was.
To share screen.
You need to make a real.
I I can open up my, open up my file here and then share screen.
You gotta be pretty good at it. Sorry.
It was waving at me from the back.
As soon as you said flash drive. Okay, you should be able to share a screen now.
Great. Oh, thank you. Thank you. So these are photographs that were uh attached to the application form. And I just want you to i- identify that first photograph. Is that the annex building that we're talking about?
It is. It's the front of it.
And it looks like a single family house, correct?
It is.
So are there gonna be any change to that?
No, not to the footprint or its look, uh, but we will be making, um, some of the windows have been changed out so that they are they're in better condition, but yes, everything is the same.
Uh, other than it's, you're not changing the footprint of the building or the look of the building?
Absolutely not.
Other than improving?
Uh, we're improving, yes.
The, that is, uh, second photo is a picture of the side of the residence?
Correct.
And that's looking at it from?
From the east, you're looking west, so you're standing on the eastern side.
Towards the church on the other side.
Correct.
And now I'm gonna. Turn the side around.
While you're doing that, Steve, I'm just gonna say for the record that these were all part of the applications. They're part and parcel of the.
Look, I might not be able to rotate them. That's the other side of the building, correct?
That is, so you're, you've got the church behind you. You are looking east, so you're actually on the um driveway coming into the parking lot.
And thankfully, this one goes back right.
Yeah.
And that's the rear of the building?
It is.
And any changes to that side of the building?
No.
And the parking lot's already paved and striped, correct?
Correct.
Sure.
Um, Cavalry Episcopal Church is is dedicated to help not only um our fellow organizations that help um the community, but we feel that we have a very good relationship with many of our neighbors, so um you know, we we hope that um people will see that um this is not to cause them any grief or conflict, but it is to help those that are less fortunate. I think we should have our board professionals ask their social.
Right.
Also have the public.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I'm just gonna.
At a time, yeah.
Yep, just gonna say quickly, um, for those of you that haven't been here before, there's a very specific structure as to how we have to run these meetings, just so everything is consistent. Uh, Mr. Groenberg has put on his first witness. After that witness is done, which it seems like she is, the board members and the board professionals are gonna be able to ask her some questions. And then after that, the public is going to be able to ask her questions only. Anything she covered in her testimony tonight, you can ask her questions about. It's not a time for comments. It's not a time for anything but questions of this witness. Same process for the next witness, and I think he said he has three, so we'll we'll repeat that three times. After everything is done, he concludes his presentation. Everyone in this room will have the opportunity to come up and make their comments, which encompasses anything you'd like to say for or against this application. Um, there will be a three-minute time period and you will be able to have that opportunity. But we just really want to try and, if I interrupt you when you're doing anything, it's not meant to be rude. It's just meant to maintain the process. Um, questions of witnesses are just questions of that particular witness.
Professionals?
I have a question, if you're the, if you're the right witness for this. So you talk a lot about how there are no improvements necessary to accommodate the the four families that will be living there and the staff. But does that also equally apply to the interior of the building? Have you pulled permits? Do you anticipate pulling permits for that?
Uh, somebody else give you the answer tonight.
Thank you. I'll wait.
She probably could, but I think.
It's okay. I'll pass that one.
Okay, from the uh board members themselves, online, any questions from anybody? Okay, Karen, no. Anna, no. The rest, okay, Mike? Jack Campion?
Then I would say.
No.
No questions?
None, thank you.
Then I would say we can start with the public that's here and we make sure the public are online.
Right.
Okay. Anybody from the audience, one at a time? You wanna start way in the back or in the front? Start at the front. Name?
Sharon. Sharon, the mic is gonna pick that up. They might have to come. From around the mic.
Name, address?
Chairman Ryder, thirty five Elwood Avenue.
I'm sorry, Sharon, we didn't get your address.
Thirty five Elwood Avenue.
And that was Flemington?
Yes. So you, so there's four families. How many children will be in those?
I'll have another witness give you the specifics of that.
Um, then how many bedrooms have you had in four families?
Four bedrooms, but I'll have a. Four bedrooms, but I'll have another witness.
And do all the bedrooms have exit windows?
Get you an answer to that, but we'll get you an answer.
And I believe you mentioned supervisors. Who will be supervisors?
We'll get you. She's the church, the Family Promise person, she's coming up. But there's two.
And if you have four families, what about the kitchen privileges inside again?
Yeah, she's the church, that's a Family Promise one, give you the specifics of all of that.
Okay. Because my property backs up to the parking lot of the church, I'm witness to how much traffic is in the parking lot. And my concern is that if you have small children in this house.
Is this gonna be a question?
Just a question.
Is it gonna be a question?
Yeah, what about the children's safety as far as there's no fencing for children's play?
So, that's a question.
The question, will there be fencing for the children?
Can I just say, I'm going to pass on that one as well, there could be fencing, but that is something that we're still working on with Family Promise as to additional improvements that may need to be made outside the piece of property.
Right now, there's no plan for any additional improvements.
Please, thank you for your questions, and if there are any questions, take that as a burning point. If there are any questions, take them, and it will be proper. Name, address?
I'm like Bruce Mara, 11 New York Avenue. The, the horn, the horn said that she has a good relationship with the neighbors. I've been there two and a half years, I've never met it before. I've called the church.
Question, please.
Question, question.
Your guest, I'm sorry, I missed.
11 New York.
Thank you. And that's Flemington?
Correct, yes. So I called, I called the church probably two weeks ago, never got a church call back.
I can honestly say, I, I can ask our parish administrator as to the reasons why that wasn't returned, I wasn't aware that you would call, because I would have called you back.
Okay, and you said that you had a good relationship with the neighbors, can you state any of the neighbor's names?
I, well, directly next door happens to be the gentleman by the name of Rick, who works with us quite frequently on things. So he, as you're looking at, that you're looking at Broad Street is to our right. We have worked with a neighbor who is directly behind us where the fencing ends, I cannot tell you what their name is, but we have other members of our vestry who have worked with them when we had to change out dumpsters and level pieces of property in order to make it aesthetically pleasing for them, we've done that. We've worked with some of our neighbors when it comes to trees that had needed to come down. So we've worked with them on that. Now, I realize that you happen to be directly across, we did have a relationship, very close relationship with the people who owned this property prior to you. But when the pandemic took place and Father Nathan was there, we sort of contracted as well. So in the, in the last six or eight months, we're still trying to get our feet and work on making ourselves known to the community.
Also, is there anything you're doing about the members of the AA group and their speeding up and down that roadway on the piece of property? Particularly on Saturday mornings, that's the reason why I called, yeah.
I had absolutely no idea that that was the case, and thank you for letting us know that, because we will go back to the organizers of Saturday morning's meeting, and we will talk to them directly. Appreciate that.
All right, with that particular question, did you happen to call police department?
I did.
Did you? It's on record.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Christina, this is Mara, 11 New York Avenue. My question is, you mentioned that you have the AA meetings in the morning, where you have seen the very pressing property. My question is, will you continue to host these meetings, because often they are posted outside in the parking lot while you have tenants that are there? Especially as we commented earlier, it's a question about the stop-station, where you can see that hosts these meetings outside in the parking lot. And how will the number of spaces that you're limiting now affect that?
We can host AA meetings internally, inside the parish hall. This really is based on what is the comfort level of the AA group at that time. We did give them the option to use the parking lot, so they pull in and then bring their chairs to the center. We also have an area which is slated in the back, and they sometimes need there. Yes, we will still continue with the AA meetings, we have spoken to them, but we will be potentially renting out the annex, and they are willing to work with us. We feel very confident that the individuals who are participating in the AA meeting will do, the organizers will do everything they can in order to continue to protect our property. And will do whatever is necessary in order to work with Family Promise.
And my next question is, you mentioned you're gonna have two supervisors on site, will they do that 24 hours, and will they also use the parking lots?
That's actually Family Promise's question, but the answer is, yes.
Okay, okay, thanks. Okay.
John Norman, 34 New York Avenue, down the street, the other block. This is a question that I'm not really sure that's the right way, if you tell me it's wrong, let. You say four families are gonna be there once, plus two supervisors. How many are allowed in these four families? How many do you have, could you possibly have as much?
I'll get you an answer to that through the other witness, but I can tell you it's 14.
14 people.
14, 14 staying plus two supervisors, or 14 people staying.
I have a bigger house, I'm telling you, no way you can do that in my house.
Is that a question?
That's the answer.
Todd Cook, 39 Pennsylvania Avenue, will the church maintain ownership of the property?
Yes.
Are there any future plans for subdivision?
Like selling, selling a piece, not at this time?
In the separate lot right now, but they're, so it's not a subdivision.
And the approval rise with the land regardless of whether or not the church owns the property, or should you sell the property in the future, correct?
I don't know how to answer that, because I'm not sure.
It would run with the law.
Next. Just for a quick clarification, Mr. Cook asked, are Board of Justicement rules, regulations, so on and so forth, variances granted, it runs in perpetuity for the property?
Susan Igalar, 36 Broad Street, Flemington. I live next to Rick, I've lived there for 22 years, and I've never met you either. I want to know the existing auxiliaries of education and office, is there an occupancy load sign hanging in the, in that auxiliary building right now, and if so, what does it say? I mean, it says signs, there should be an occupancy load.
Yeah. I think it's 26, but it may be more than that. It sticks up in the front of the building.
Any more questions?
Mark A, 28 New York Avenue, been there 18 years, I've not met anyone from the church at all. Comments that were made safety-wise regarding the events on Saturday morning of the people leaving, 100% speeding down that street, I've called the police several times, they've got cars tracking the speeding. Can you go through that stop sign?
You got a bit of a question, just saying, how are you gonna protect the safety of the individuals who are going to stay there with the speeding on that street?
Um, I, this is the first time that we've heard that there is speeding on the street, so now that we know about it, I, this may sound funny. I have, we've had three preachers or priests there, I'm not even sure that they were aware that there was this issue. So it has now come to our attention, we will then take it back to the AA meetings and tell them that they need to be cognizant of all of this, number one. But it is something that we will be discussing with Family Promise as to how to best serve and take care of the people that are renting on this property, so that there isn't any hazards.
Thank you.
Before moving on, I think I've got a question that comes up with regard to this, several people have mentioned speeding. Is, apparently that's in relation to current activities? Okay, and then what would be in the change if you get the approval for it for the occupancy of the structure? How would that not affect, or how would it, would it affect the speeding issue you have now that somebody has to take care of? I mean, are the people who are gonna occupy the building of the type that would also speed?
I don't, I gotta be honest with you, I don't know how you could answer that question.
Well.
People of the type that would speed.
So, well, right now, apparently, there's an issue that has been voiced about exceeding the supposed speed limit on the street.
Right.
Okay, and it's been reported.
Right.
My question is, with the new occupants of the building, is how, you're gonna have to control more people. So I take it you'll have a program, or Family Promise will have a program that would be, keep an eye on not only what you're doing, but what would happen with the other uses that are on the property?
Well, Family Promise will be responsible for anything that is taking place with their particular program. Since AA is using our facility, we need to go back to them again. Honest to God, this is, as a senior warden, this is the first time I have heard that there has been speeding on that road after Saturday morning or any of meetings. Otherwise, this would have been addressed much sooner than now. So I need to go back and find out what's going on and make sure that they're aware of, like, this can't happen. But they are aware that we are going to be leasing that piece of property for purposes of another program that will have families in it.
You're right, to understand that the application you have is not for what is happening on the site, no, it's for something new. And I'm just trying to make sure that the background wasn't creating a problem, or it would be exacerbated by what you're gonna do.
And we're talking about four to five parking spaces.
Yep.
And you're getting your testimony about, in the fact that displaced families often don't have cars. So that's why they're in the situation that they are, there are some people who do, and some people who don't, and there will be two staff members, so you're talking about four to five parking spaces. And we're also talking, we're also doing a testimony about the limited hours that people are actually going to be there too.
Okay. Bob, do you know how many, exactly how many parking spaces are available for the church?
There's a plan they presented, but I'm not sure it's representative of current conditions.
Okay. Next.
Okay. Angela, you're the.
One more question.
Elaine Norman, 34 New York Avenue, for the last 53 years. I just have a couple of questions, we were talking about being perfectly supervised. I'd like to know who those supervisors might be, are they hired staff? Are they certified? Are they teachers?
And our next witness is gonna give you all that information.
Okay, I will look forward to hearing now what they have to say. Four families, two staff members, and we were talking about parking and cars which would be coming and going, I would assume. Do we have any idea, do each staff member have a car with any of the residents? Is that the other person to tell?
It is, but I think I just indicated that it's, that staff members would have cars, and you might have some residents who would have cars, but they're preserving four to five parking spaces. There are many who don't have cars, so, but I'll get you the witness who is much more familiar. I'm the lawyer, so I can't really testify, but let me get you the witness who testified.
You mentioned occupancy load was 26, is that true?
That's what.
That's what I believe it is, I'd have to double-check that, but it's, it's, so there could be up to 26 people.
There won't be. We'll, we'll. I'd really like to get the next witness on, who's gonna answer all these questions.
And then I can go back.
You sure have.
You have two shots. Only two.
All right, thank you.
Sure. One more? No, I guess that, okay.
Anybody online?
Anybody online?
I do see.
Yeah, just open up.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Hi, Nancy Schirmerhorn, property owner, 41 Maple. My question is regarding the leadership of the church itself, so when did Pastor Nathan leave?
His last day at the church was August 31st, 2021.
So when do you foresee that you will be getting a new pastor?
We're in the process right now of going through what the diocese requires of us. So it could be the fall, maybe closer to Christmas of this year.
Should the church be closed because of dwindling membership? Does that mean that Family Promise would remain in the mans, in the, in the house? Or if the church is closed, would they be vacating as well?
Well, first off, I don't see Cavalry closing at all. So the lease that will be with Family Promise starts out for five years, and we'll see how it goes from there, but there's no reason why we are closing.
So it's not, it's not a, you're not selling the property to Family Promise. It's, I mean, the church is maintaining ownership, and there's a lease agreement which allows them to use the property for five years.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
No more hands? Where is it?
I see, yes, Paul Barrett.
Yes.
Hi, Rick Barrett here, I'm at 38 Broad Street. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I have discussed this with her a little bit, and I've also been in the annex. My question is, do you really think that you can accommodate four families in that building?
Yeah, we're gonna provide you that testimony with Angela Fields, and she'll talk about the specifics of the families and how that works.
Yeah, but I'd like to get her comment on this, I mean, you know, we have talked about it, and when this first came out, the Democrat kind of mispublished what was the intention of this Family Promise thing. And in my discussions with her, she kind of indicated to me that there wouldn't be really four families in there.
Can we turn that into a question, please? Let's pose the question to her and let her answer.
The question is, does she think that annex is large enough for four, to accommodate four families?
Rick, this is Maril, so in our conversations, I know that you had looked to see what the property looked like, and the answer is, I am relying on Family Promise and am very confident that based on their needs, that we can accommodate them. It is my understanding, and I know Angela will be able to talk to this better than I, that it is always a fluid situation. It doesn't necessarily mean there would always be four families in there. But there is a threshold of 14 plus two staff. And with the work that I know that you have seen our parishioners have done in the annex, you can see what we've done in order to accommodate that. Again, we, we are working in tandem with Family Promise and with the people who are working on it from our parishioners, we feel that we can accommodate what is being asked of us.
Okay, it just seems to me that the structure is going to be too small for that. It just seems to me that the structure is going to be too small for that.
I have one question. It could be a public comment, they're not.
Okay.
I'll judge for that, but questions only, please. Apparently no more questions from the public.
I know, so Mrs. Schirmer, I don't know what she was.
Mrs. Schirmer, do you still have a question?
I don't think she ever took her hand down.
Yeah, I don't think she ever took her hand down.
I didn't know she had a follow up question.
Okay. Okay, Steve, your next witness.
Angela Fields, please.
Ms. Fields, what is your position with Family Promise of Hunterdon County?
I am the executive director of Family Promise of Hunterdon County.
And what is Family Promise of Hunterdon County?
In a nutshell, Family Promise of Hunterdon County is a whole, is a holistic residential support center with wraparound services for families who are vulnerable within the county.
You said families that are vulnerable. What does that mean?
Well, it could mean a great breakup. It could mean a family breakup and a mom and child have no place to go and they need a place to start over. It could mean someone who is underemployed and can't make ends meet. And they need a place to, to stop, get to transition into housing again. It could mean a woman who was in safe house after having domestic violence issues and that they are recommended to us once they're out of danger to our, our facility and then we help them get into housing.
What, what about if there's a fire and somebody's out there and nowhere to go?
Yes, also, there was a fire in November in Hunter Hills and we were able to take in about, I believe eight to 10 of those families and transition them into, to housing.
What about families that sustain a flood and they're no longer able to get into their, uh?
Yes, we were able to support hurricane item listings as well. Maintain shelter and or give them security deposits or rental assistance in order for them to be relocated and housing.
So this, this isn't just people who people might think are homeless. These are, these are families that are in need and distress for a number of reasons, correct?
Right, and we actually don't say that. We actually don't categorize people as homeless because we're labeling them. People are not homeless. They are experiencing homelessness. And that's who we, we serve, people who are experienced homeless. But the bulk of what we do, people don't even know about. We have homeless prevention services where we keep people housed. So we kept 45 people housed last year and out of shelter program or shelter facility or needing residential support at all.
So you mentioned the, the Hunter Hills fire and that your group took care of a lot of those people, correct? Are these people essentially neighbors around the, the county?
They are, and I believe two or three of them actually put someone out of the fire and they was able by the barrel to receive the Good Citizen Award for being a good neighbor or a good neighbor award.
So, so these aren't people from necessarily from far away. There are people in Flemington Borough and Hunterdon County that need help.
Service Hunterdon County. And additionally, all of the funds that we may receive is exclusively from Hunterdon County. So everything we do is for the county, is for Hunterdon County.
Okay. And part, part of your goal is when families are in distress, is for them to stay together, correct?
Yes.
And, and how do you achieve that goal?
One way is to provide lodging for them together. We offer different therapy programs for them. We have parenting crisis. We have once more mental health where we care of them, want to know with a psychiatrist who is, you know, mental health professional who is able to leave them, you know, as needed and to help get them out of crisis because, you know, having a traumatic experience for anyone or anything needs to be overcome before you can be a productive person, before you can get you into doing the things that you need to do. So that's some of the things. And we also implement art therapy, music therapy for the kids so that they will be able to verbalize what they've been through in order for them to build a good process, vehicle process that they could be as healthy as possible.
So where do all those activities take place?
So pre-COVID, they took place within our churches. And let me just, if I may, just explain how we came to this point. Pre-COVID, our families will rotate. The four and 14 is the fire marshal code for hospitality rooms. That's not us. And so that's what every family comes to buy by. It doesn't necessarily mean 14 people. It's just how many people in your family. So we had a mom and three kids and, and two moms with two kids or whatever, however that dynamic go. Once we have four families, that's the max. But we're, they're just making concessions for if the family is bigger. But that's the fire code. That's not family promise. So they would be in hospitality rooms. They would be in singular classrooms and the churches would put in beds and lamps and things like that and fix it up really nicely. And then every family had one single room and they were in that room and then they would eat communally. And that's how we've run for the past. We've been here since 1990. So that's how we work.
And that would be in different churches, right?
In different houses of worship and they will rotate. But during COVID, as you know, everything shut down, churches shut down. And we had to find other ways of helping families, including either identify with them. And so we transferred to hotel motel.
So.
Sheltering place.
So more recently, you've been using hotel motels to try and put the families up on a temporary basis?
Yes.
And how did you find that working?
It takes away from our mission a little bit to have them so far away. We want to be able to let them know that they're not forgotten. We want to be compassionate. And we wanna, you know, walk beside them as they're going through this traumatic experience. You know, most people who become unsheltered is their first occurrence. And they may have children and we may, you know, want to make sure their kids are, you know, taken care of, that their needs are met, that they have the amount of diapers that they need, that they have, you know, the clothing for interview. And, and because they're so far away, it's, it's strained. And then it's unsupervised. And or not as supervised as we would like. And that's not the way we want to to move, to move forward. Because even when they were in the churches, they had people there between the hours that they were there and people sleeping over and then they would come back to the day center in the morning. And now they don't, they don't have that structure that we would like to see.
How about financially?
Financially for us, the more money we put into hotel motel, the less service, the less that money will be taken away from them, you know? So we pay the hotel, let's say $10,000. That's $10,000 that we can't help a family, you know, or fix a vehicle to keep somewhere because we've been back to fix vehicles so a person could maintain their job or pay, you know, incidentals for members. So it's just not called the back.
So we heard that capital return to physical church approached you about this particular property.
Yeah.
How does that work into your, your plans?
Mr. Godson, honestly, because we were, before we moved our offices to Barto's Corner Road, we were in this area. We were on East Main Street, 10 East Main Street. And so we were serving families there and they were one of our host churches. So our families would stay up there as well. So this community is walkable for them. And it's close enough to our offices so that we could be in contact with them and we could get them the services that they need sooner depending on what they need.
So you mentioned your offices. Where are your offices located now?
We are at 8 Barto's Corner Road.
In Brereton Township, but. And what, what goes on at 8 Barto's Corner Road?
What goes on at 8 Barto's Corner Road is we have case management station there. We have our local offices there. I may note that is, this is not like emergency drop off, like police aren't dropping people off or dropping transit people off. We are by appointment only. We filter calls for housing daily. We offer housing solutions to house a, maybe no less than seven, seven families a day. Which means helping keep them housed or helping them housing with our landlord mediation. We also have a setup where we have a computer lab where they can come do their housing searches, employment searches. We do resume building. We invite like Wells Fargo over and they do financial literacy with our families. We just connected with a pharmaceutical company in Hampton who will do career training and career building with our families. We have like so many, you know, we partner with so many different people. We have relationships with different businesses. They know us and so they'll be willing to hire our moms. So we are just, we work for families basically.
So at the annex, whether the families are going to be staying, are they going to be living there forever?
No. So we have, it's between 30 and 90 days stay, they per occurrence. And that's what we, we adhere to. That's what we try to adhere to. It just depends on how long someone was in crisis that they may need a little longer and, you know, longer supports. But it's mainly 30 to 90 days.
So it's temporary?
Very temporary, yes.
And where, where do all the counseling and the structural activities and meeting with counselors?
Yes.
And resume building, where does that all take place?
8 Barto's Corner Road.
And what time period does that take place?
Between nine and five.
Okay. So when do you expect people to be at the site? Now, I think when I say at the site, let me be clear, at the annex building.
Yes, so people will, will be at the annex between 5:00 PM and 9:00 AM.
Okay. It's closed from?
Yes, normally we're there until 5:00. Yes. And some of our families does have cars, but we did, we do have funding to purchase a passenger van. So whatever leftover or cars that, that aren't able to fit in the spots, they can stay at our 8 Barto's Corner Road office and we can transport them over to the Promise Center. And, and then at 9:00 AM, transport them back to 8 Barto's Corner Road.
So you have the ability to use four or five parking spaces?
Yes.
But if need be, you could transport personnel or the families to 8 Barto's Corner where their car might be parked.
Right, and that's the same amount as before with the churches. We're using the same thing. So this is not anything new.
So you don't expect there to be a parking or problem at all for you? And the two supervisors would have the ability also that gives that vacancy thing?
Uh huh.
So let's describe the annex building. There's four bedrooms, correct?
Yes.
But they're large bedrooms because there's no living room space, correct? There's no dining room space.
Right.
There's no dens or anything like you would find in a normal house, correct?
Correct.
They'd be, essentially, there's two bedrooms downstairs for the entirety of the first floor.
Right.
Except for a little kitchen area and bathroom. And the second floor is two bedrooms with a bathroom, correct? There's also a little workstation out on the second floor?
Yes.
And a workstation on the first floor where two supervisors will be.
Yes.
And they'll be there the entire time?
Yes.
That, I just answered your question. That's okay. I know you felt what I'm going to say, but I'm going to get it out. They'll be there the entire time that the families are there.
Yes.
Okay. And who are the supervisors?
Well, they are hired yet. We are waiting for this process to be complete so we can know which way we, you know, what we have to do. But as soon as, if we get the okay to go work, then we will start the process of hiring our supervisors. And all of this is now in accordance with state regulations because all facilities, transitional housing facilities is under state regulations. So everything that they, we have to go through a process after this to be licensed to make sure that everything we're doing is in accordance to DCA state regulations.
Right, and that's, that was actually going to be one of my next questions was, where are you going to the money to do this?
DCA.
Right, the Division of Community Affairs, right, Department of Community Affairs?
Yes, they are really excited about this, by the way.
And they're giving you the funding in order to rehabilitate this single family structure into four bedrooms, correct?
Yes.
And in order to get that money, you have to comply with all of their regulations, correct?
Yes, and they also gave us the money for the van.
Okay. And you have to be licensed by them in order to conduct these activities?
We do.
Okay. So it's a licensed facility through the state government, correct? And you have to adhere to all of their state standards, correct?
Yes.
And that includes fire standards?
Yes.
That includes safety standards?
Yes.
And that includes when you hire employees, they have to meet their guidelines, correct?
Yes.
So is it fair to say that's really heavy, heavily regulated by the state?
Yes.
Okay. And for good reason, because there's going to be children involved, correct? And to, what, what type of safety features are going to be put in place for me in the annex for the families?
Well, we have an intake process. We have a screening process and then we have an intake process to see who's a fit for our program. Our program is really geared towards people who are underemployed or people who have the ability to gain employment so that they could become sustainable. Our, our focus is making families sustainable, okay, you know, after whatever crisis that they've been through. So we are a clean program, so no alcohol, no drugs or anything like that, no undiagnosed mental health. And, and as a side, we are also bound by Family Promise National who's in Summit. They have rules, ground rules, and these are their ground rules that we have to abide by in order to be able to.
Let's go a little bit more detail about the ground rules in terms of substance abuse and alcohol.
So yes, no, that's not allowed. And.
What, what time period does somebody have to be clean in order to be able?
Six months. You have to at least be clean and sober for six months in order to be considered for.
And you still have the option of rejecting anybody that you have a concern about, correct?
And we do background checks as well. Not that we need them, but just to be safe with our children. And our motto is children are families. The Family Promise motto is to end childhood homelessness. So we come, we take whoever comes with a child. So mom and kids, dad and kids. And then if we have space, we'll take a single woman, but we don't take single men. Single men are not allowed to be in the same space in family shelter by law.
Okay. So the more likely scenario is it fair to say it would be a mother and one or two children?
Yes.
Occasionally three children or four, but no more than four in a room.
Right, that's your family makeup, yeah.
Right. So it would be a family in a room, but it's often just a mother and one or two children.
Yes.
You have the ability, because there's four rooms, to technically have up to 14 people temporarily reside. Temporarily residing there, correct?
Yes, if the total family makeup of the four families equals fourteen people, yes.
Okay, so um. The ordinance actually allows for, if this was solely for domestic violence. Um you can have fifteen people. But you're not, this isn't just solely domestic violence, um it's as you described, correct?
Correct.
Um so if it was domestic violence, it would be a permitted use. And in fact, you're doing the exact same thing as what a community shelter would be, which is a group of people, fair to say?
Yes, so a lot of domestic violence there.
Yeah, um so there's gonna be a workstation upstairs. And that person will be there from five o'clock at night till nine o'clock in the morning, correct?
Uh so it's it's in shifts, so two people would be upstairs between five and nine and one thirty, two people be downstairs between.
Okay, so they're not working, there's not one person helping or something, okay.
No. Yeah, labor laws.
Um security measures in terms of cameras, locks, or anything like that?
Yes, we do.
And what do you do?
Uh we have um intercom system, we have the doorbell, we have cameras. We will have cameras and common areas, we would have cameras outside and we will have our security. Uh doors that people who are not within that the in that program cannot enter.
And do you have any capability of viewing those cam- uh cameras uh on your phone?
Yes, so the way the way the uh our uh day center is set up now is that we have uh a a security. System on the outside with some arrangements, the doorbell, we actually have an app so everyone in the office can view. Um who's at the door, um via phone wherever they are and can answer that person.
So during the day, what happens? Where where does everybody go?
During the day, um it just depends, like moms go to work, kids go to school. Uh if they don't have employment, they come back and get case management, we do employment or resume building. They do uh training programs with the West Cap. Um they go to social services, it uh we, they go to the workforce development. Um center, it just depends on what they need to do for the day, but yes, everyone is doing something.
And they're not there?
Right.
The only time that people will be there will be from five to nine during weekdays.
Yes.
And then they will be there on the weekends, correct?
Yes, and holidays.
Uh the children are going to the school and most likely to the school that they've been going to.
Yes.
Before they became displaced, correct?
Right.
Um if their mother needs to work, what happens to the children who aren't school age?
So we uh will put them in daycare, uh just another mandate that uh within the first week, all children have to be placed in in school. So um school age kids go to school, um and kids who aren't exactly school age are recommended to daycare centers.
Okay, um so the the property looks like a house now, what's it gonna look like when you're done? There's definitely any change, correct?
No.
Um and in fact, other than weekends and evenings, nobody's even gonna be there, correct? Correct, um. I think you already answered a bunch of these questions. I tried to cover everybody's questions, but I know there's gonna be a bunch more, so I think I think but I think we've covered that. Um but I'll open it up in public to ask the word.
Yep.
Um just looking at the numbers, is it safe to say, I'm just trying to make some notes and and make sure I can get. Aggressed by it, four families or fourteen people, whichever comes first?
No, 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 um the fourteen people is like the limit on a family number. So if we get four families, three people each, that's fine, but it's just up to fourteen people. So if we have three families and they is ten people already and it's and the next family has five, well, we can't. We can't take you obviously because it's over the limit that that is set by us, so that.
And if you have three families that are already at fourteen, let's say, you can't entertain a fourth.
That's.
Okay, so it's whichever one comes first, either four families or fourteen people, whichever one comes first, is that safe to say?
Yeah, you can only have one family per bedroom too, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's all.
But we usually don't get families.
I I'm sure, I'm just again, just trying to.
Yes.
Seems sad.
So um you, I think you started to answer my question, my question was just about permits and how the interior of the building is gonna be outfit. And I heard you say that through your funding or your extra licensing through DCA, you've had to run through their. Fire, their safety and also the employment, employee standards rather. But does that mean that the interior building improvements will still be subject to? The local permitting process, is that an additional process on top of that? I mean ultimately, what I'm asking is who will conduct inspections and what's the what's the schedule for doing that? As it relates to the.
In terms of construction?
Uh fitting out the interior of the building.
Um I believe it goes through the 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 local offices in terms of getting permits and things like that.
Yeah, that's the the way this whole thing came about is that we did file for building permits. And then the issue of use came to be, which is why we're here. So my understanding is that building permits for plumbing and fire if needed would. And a CO are gonna be need to be obtained through the municipality, but we still need to meet the DCA standards and all of their requirements.
Okay, so local officials will be um reviewing the interior of the building to issue the to issue the permits. We're not ceding that control to state DCA officials, okay.
Even though DCA is gonna be probably more stringent than the local.
I appreciate that, I think it for me, it gives me some comfort knowing that. I mean, I'm pleased to hear DCA oversight, state oversight, but also gives me some comfort just knowing that we'll have. Our local officials uh that will have a chance to review the building and. Uh confirm that it's up to construction code, fire code, and any of the other. One more question right now, thanks.
I'll just one or two questions, the um I understand the occupancy during the week is limited to the evening hours. On holidays and weekends, is that the same thing or is that the twenty-four?
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours.
Yeah.
And this is the only facility in Hunter County operating as as a single bed and home for this purpose, or?
Yes.
Um under your organization, other, so do you do you see a need for any exterior outdoor uses? Either, well, obviously maybe not, you know, during a weekday stuff, but on weekends. A play area, fenced in area, any anything of that nature?
Um right now, I I don't, um because we're still trying to incorporate some of the old model, which would mean families on weekend. Can go with our church groups and do activities and things like that. We want them to have as normal as a life as possible. And I do understand that playing in a church parking lot is not as normal as life is possible. Um but for me personally, the house structure is um as normal life as possible. Because when someone comes out the out of a crisis situation, um. We want them to feel cared for, um and the more they feel cared for, the more they're put in to getting this thing back. That structure back, that family back, that support back, and so that is uh strategic. Um but we do want them to still have that uh. That compassionate touch, so we don't wanna lose our church, so that's cool, we provide meals, we don't have a kitchen. Because they will be preparing meals the same way that they have been and bringing it to the families. Uh because of COVID regulations, they can't eat communally right now, so they will have like a small table in their own home space. But they will be getting visits and they will be engaging in different activities.
Okay, and I noticed in the photograph, there is some sort of a fire uh escape in the center of the four bedroom building. Uh do you anticipate, do you know whether there's gonna be any other modifications in the building? I mean, one thing is what struck me anyways would be ADA, you have to have ADA access to the structure.
Uh so we are working with the contractor, um and we did bring up uh the fire stuff. Uh and uh we did, and the immigrants received money from DCA to repair. Uh the forges for to make it up to code and the fire is still there.
So you would anticipate some sort of a necessity, some sort of a ramp to get to there? The structure has to be ADA compliant, that's the question.
Um that is not a question for me, maybe.
I'm not sure whether it needs to be ADA compliant, compliant, um but I'm sure the state would let us know whether it needs to be. Compliant, I'm not sure about quite on that stuff.
So I mean, it's possible there's gonna be some for that for that purpose, perhaps some modifications to the exterior structure. Construction of measures or something.
If if it is required, we haven't, we haven't been notified that it's required for this type of facility.
Yeah, one more, one more topic I just wanted to explore, if you're the right witness. Can you talk a little bit about the need for the housing? I think to some extent, it's sort of obvious, right? Uh but can you talk a little bit about maybe the need in the county? Or comparing these four families to the need that the organizations that the organizations see? Like how much, how much of the need would this serve?
There is, there is a huge need, um I don't think that um. That is seen readily in the town, right, uh so. And and due to COVID, uh we have seen numbers go up, we have seen needs go up, we have seen people, houses be foreclosed. And so they need something to transition. Um we are uh seeing people hours have been cut due to COVID and then they're behind. Um and so there is a huge need um in terms of needing this. Now, I will say that that since the end of last year, we've been getting calls um. About people in arrears and we've been finding programs and doing our best to help. Um people stay housed to the tune of people are behind to the tune of fourteen thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, seven thousand dollars. And as much as we're able to do, we're not gonna be able to catch everyone. And so we're gonna need a space and a place to catch some of these families in order to transition them without them having to be homeless for an extended amount, so.
Is poverty a particular problem in the borough compared to the rest of Hunter County?
Our biggest population is in the town.
So that there's a higher percentage of people in coming to borough that are below the poverty level than throughout the rest of Hunter County? Fair to say that although Hunter County is a rather affluent county, that there is a significant need for this type of. Service to those displaced families?
Yes. Do you, do you serve, as a result of that poverty, do you serve a disproportionate? Or a greater number of families from the borough specifically as compared to the county? I don't know if you have that figure.
I I don't have that figure, but I do know that uh we do serve a lot of people in town. Um and that's why this has always been an ideal location. Um but I I'll give you an example, some of the of people we serve is your cashier at ShopRite. Some of the people who will be here will be, uh we have school teachers, we had a nurse. Uh these are your neighbors, literally your neighbors, that just needs a place to transition. This is your uh fitness trainer at Orange, Orange Fitness, you know. We serve people who serve you at Chico Life, like these are our people that we are inherently serving.
One more question, um to that end, are there other facilities like this in the area, who's the closest other facility, you know? Is this, I'm sorry, is this literally the only type of facility in Hunter County for for children and families?
Yeah, this is gonna be.
Is that why the DCA is so excited about this project?
That is why the DCA is thrilled.
Question.
Jim, Mike Campion.
Okay, Mike.
When families are moving in, are they moving in with their furniture and moving out with their furniture?
No, sir, um they're just, they're moving in uh with the items that they need immediately. We have storage for them at the day center, we also will have a little storage space for them there. Uh but most, a lot of families that come in uh say it's a D V victim, they're fleeing, so they don't have furniture. Uh but what we do is, well, we help them find a new place, we get uh furniture donated and we furnish their house as much as possible.
Thank you, al- also, um are family and friends or friends allowed to stay on holidays, sleepover?
No, um but families do have um the opportunity to do weekend passes to stay at their friend's house. But no one outside of the program can be in our facility at any time.
Are there pets allowed?
No.
And the supervisors, um you you said they're around the clock, um even when they're on vacation, somebody will cover?
Um yes, this is an extension of our Family Promise offices, police staff.
Thank you, that's it, Jim, thank you.
Hey, Mike, thanks.
Yeah, 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 uh is Family Promise a religious or a secular organization?
Uh we are just a nonprofit organization.
Uh what are the safety conditions generally of people without homes? Are they safe without a home?
No.
Do you believe they'd be safer inside of a home?
Yes.
Uh is there a greater need for housing than you can currently support? Will this, do you have to reject families sometimes from the program?
The family list, yes.
And will this site allow you to serve more families than you currently do?
Um it would allow us to serve more families with more services, more readily than we are able to do right now.
Anna.
Hi, I guess my question kind of pertains to um. Like COVID these days, so each a family, so each floor has more than one family, correct?
Uh yes.
For each floor, okay, so I guess what what would happen if one family were to get, someone were to contract COVID? Like how does quarantine factor, how does that work?
Okay, so. Back to DCA, we have COVID funds, so we are testing twice a week and we have funds for when someone contracts COVID. We could quarantine them in a hotel or up to.
Okay, okay, mm-hmm, awesome. Um and then I guess my other question, you you may not, may not be for you, but if if you, if it is for you, great, I guess um. Uh I it it problem, it might not be for you, but for ventilation, and is there, do you know, is there AC? Is there gonna be central AC, is there, is there, is it just window units?
Um I don't believe there there are central air in there.
Yes, yeah. It's, okay, and there will be one for each room?
Yes.
Okay.
Karen.
That's what I, that's what I have for right now. Thank you.
Um if you could just give testimony, and and you have no connection with the group that a lot of people. Um that previously asked questions were concerned about, is that correct?
I I didn't understand or maybe I didn't hear the whole question.
Uh I just wanted uh testimony to confirm that Family Promise has no connections with the um Alcoholics Anonymous, Narcotics Anonymous groups. So it's a completely separate organization.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I guess one of the questions I had, I'm a little bit uh not quite understanding the occupancy of the building. Is it, is it true that the building's empty every day or is it, are there, are there occupants in the four structures at all times? In the four bedrooms?
So it just depends on um who transitioned out, who's coming in, you know. Uh so if we have four families, all four families will be coming to the day center or taking their kids to school or going somewhere. During the day between hours of nine and five. After five, uh the families will either drive or be transported to uh the promise center between the hours of five PM and nine AM.
Okay, so what we're really talking about is its place for them to stay overnight.
Right.
During the daytime, chances are there really won't be any. During the daytime, chances are there really won't be anybody in there except the supervisors.
It, it will probably be empty periods.
Supervisors won't even be there.
They don't even have to be there, okay, I'll look. Right, and, uh, when there was a question about, uh, furniture and so on like that, are the rooms themselves already set up for somebody to just stay there overnight?
Uh, they will be.
Okay, I mean, but that's part of what would be in the building at the time, is there would be appropriate furniture for them to, uh, by overnight.
Right.
Just, I, I just wanna piggyback, that's a good point. That, does that mean that, uh, I know this is not a typical residence, like apartment, but does that mean the fact that the rooms are furnished, that we don't have to, that it won't be loading, you don't have, that there will be moving trucks?
No.
Something getting out, it's just vehicles, uh, personal vehicles that is.
And maybe not even that.
Yeah, yeah, fair enough.
A follow-up, to a follow-up, who does the cleaning?
We, um, hire clean.
Okay, so I mean, there's, there's regular service for maintaining the.
Yes.
The maintenance of the clothing and so on that are in the rooms.
Yes.
Okay, people from public.
I had, sorry, I had one more question, if that's okay. Sorry, I had, I, I found a note. Um, is that okay? My, my one question, and sorry if this, if you, if you repeat yourself, uh, could you just clarify what you would expect the qualif- or what you say the qualifications are for the supervisors, what that would typically mean?
It's whatever that the state requires of us.
Whatever the state, do you have any kind of, any idea what that, what that is, or?
Um, I don't right now, just because we, um, stop everything to, uh, adhere to this process. But I would assume that they would be at least college students with psychology, social work background.
Okay.
That were.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Board members, picture. Okay, all right, that's okay. Uh, public questions, staff.
We want a corner, now what do you do up there? You said, um, at one point you moved, uh, from Hunter.
I'm sorry, really, really quick back. I, can, can you just give us your last name again and your exact address?
Salvador.
And your exact address, I'm just in the corner.
Thirty-nine, um, thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, great, thank you.
You, you said that, uh, you moved people that were in Hunter Hills out, out to other rotations.
We sheltered the families in Hunter Hills until they were able or were unable to.
They moved to other locations.
Houses.
Now, did you ever bother checking the gang affiliations when I knew these people? There's actually two gangs, two to four gangs.
Questions, questions. Yeah, well, it was a statement, so.
You're right, I'm gonna stop, I'll stop.
No, no, I'm giving you the opportunity.
There's actually two gangs in, in Hunter Hills now. Going by what you're saying, you could then move them to, uh, this new area because you never check any gang affiliations with what is going on.
I think the question might be, do you check for gang affiliations? And, and then beyond that.
What's the second question, that would be, well, since nobody checks.
Uh, no, no one said that no one checked for.
Any of them, no.
No, don't, don't, don't.
I'm interrupting you, let me, let me talk for a little bit, okay?
Sure.
Thank you. So, for testimony, it said they do background checks of people before they enter into the program. Does that include criminal background checks?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so, um, there's your answer, they do criminal background checks of people before they come in.
All right, I appreciate putting up with this because as the attorney said, we're very specific about how the.
Well, I know, I know, since there's at least two gangs.
Yeah, we.
We know, we realize it, we realize.
Comment time.
That'll be cut, you just.
No, no, but if nobody bothers checking what's going on, we could wind up with.
Okay, so that's appropriate for.
Yeah, thank you very much for putting up with this.
Yes.
That's just cutting in finally. John Gorman, thirty-four, New York Avenue. Uh, still living in the same house I did the last time I spoke. The, uh.
For sure.
Yeah, so, I, I'm concerned about, you mentioned domestic violence several times. And I'm concerned about the neighborhood, how do you, yeah, okay, you have cameras and everything else on the house. Uh, my question is, how do you protect, I, I mean, your kids? I had kids and I couldn't keep them in the house. I know they're out running around and everything. So, and if there's a domestic father that wants to get somebody, hey, I'm gonna know how, I, I, you don't keep track of this?
Okay, so it's like our policy that we always have, we cannot take women who are, um, actively fleeing. So they will go to Safe in Hunter. When the threat is over, then Safe in Hunter will refer them to us so we can help relocate them to find housing. That's how that works, um, because our address is focused. Um, and in terms of children, parents are responsible for keeping an eye on their own children at all times, that's policy. And then we'll have the two staff members there, uh, and that's, that's the way we always, uh, run the program. I mean, we don't have any issues.
Okay, and I understand from what you said before that it's only Hunter County that you take in people from. But well, as I mentioned before, if, if you have a situation like we had, I know the flood, which I have on New York Avenue, several feet of water, almost abandoned my own house. You may have to abandon those people out of that house to, I don't know, whatever is, I've never been in the place, as far as a basement. But I'm concerned, how do you do checks on people coming in if they're, if that happens to them somewhere else, you move them right in?
We have an intake process. So everyone who comes to our program, they have a screening process and we have an intake process. It's like an eight to ten page intake process where we ask all type of questions and then we do background checks. So it's not just moving people in because they have to be a fit for our program. And especially now that, that they're gonna be under one roof, um, we really have to do extensive background checks the way that we've been with just to protect the kids.
Okay, now I understand the, uh, the cost of, of putting them into an apartment or a, you know, motel or something. But at least for that facility, you do have, I'm asking this as a question, you do have facilities like a bedroom, a bathroom, a kitchen, and everything. I don't see how these people are gonna eat fourteen or, in, no, no place to sit or anything.
So they can't because of COVID? So they can't.
They're totally smoking, they're.
Questions please, John.
Your question.
So they can't eat communally because of COVID, but remember, the old model was staying in different houses of worship. So this facility is not gonna be anything different from the model that we used to have. Um, we did have a DCA walkthrough and they, if we had a kitchen, they would have to be safe serve and all of that. So it's better that we don't have a kitchen, a full kitchen, but we do have microwaves, we would have, uh, toaster ovens, we will have a small sized fridge. And we will come, do the model the way it's always been, which is trench boots make, uh, dinner for our families, excellent of a day's sleep. And, uh, that's how our families are fed.
Okay, I, I do think what you're doing is a great thing, uh, I'm not against it. I'm not really in favor of New York Avenue, but, uh, I just, uh, not said enough, I guess.
You're probably in control.
Thank you.
Right, Dominic, who's Maryland, New York Ave. Uh, Angela, thank you for what you do, first of all. Uh, secondly, I just wanted to, uh, ask, um, if you refer to domestic violence victims or where they need to go, are you aware of there's a, uh, domestic violence victim shelter in Long Island, Oregon?
I believe that's what I'm referring to, who refers to us.
Okay, and, um, uh, what do you verify, uh, sex offenders, that?
So part of it is, um, everyone who enters our, our facility and now our housing programs have to sign off that they're not on mega followers. So that comes from the state.
Okay, and then also firearms, will be any firearms?
Oh, no.
Okay.
Sorry.
Who does the, uh, come on history text at your location?
We have, um, I'm personally, and I, we have a company that we contract with, who contracts with all the Family Promise affiliates.
And then you also said, uh, it's five AM to nine AM and it's recommended that the kids go to daycare, if there's schools and sessions.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what if that's the case, will DCP and D step in if the kids are?
We are, we are mandatory reporting. So anything, uh, any abuse against kids or, or anything that's named under fifty, hard to serve people.
And I'm sorry, ask this question, the, uh, full-time staff will be there twenty percent?
The full-time staff will be there as long as people are there.
And what will, uh, there's any issues with loitering or littering, um, how will that be, uh, reported to you? As, as a, as a, as a.
So I'm assuming Calvary would, would report that to us.
Okay.
Uh, we don't foresee any of that happening, uh, but, um, Calvary will report that to us, but someone who works at Calvary and then you can get that rectified.
Okay, and then what's the, um, protocol when, um, your, one of your facilities has a narcotic related overdose?
We are clean, we're rent, so, uh.
So your, what, none of your facilities have had, no of those?
Well, I can speak for other facilities, but we never had anything like that happen.
Are, are you aware of the twenty nineteen New York Times article, which states within hundred, one, which in, within five hundred feet of a homeless shelter decreases the property value of?
Um, this isn't a homeless shelter, this is transitional housing, and no, I'm not.
Well, we don't wanna blame them, right, so.
Right, it's not a homeless shelter, it's transitional housing.
Um, and you're aware of the, uh, four, four, nine programs that the Fed's put out for people that cannot make the mortgage, sorry, joking?
Um, we are aware of different programs, however, it just, the program guidelines are so rigid that everyone aren't, doesn't qualify or aren't reached in time. And are you aware that the state ran out of money? So now, they, so now they are kicking it back to us to help help these same people.
And how much in net assets does family, um, or else has had?
Um, you can.
After twenty twenty-one?
You can go Google ours, can I be, oh, did I?
I, I swear, you know.
Okay, I didn't know, but thank you.
All right, perfect.
My name is Bill Taylor and I live in Raritan Township, I don't live in the borough.
Can I just have your address?
Sure, seven Scarlet Oak Road in Flemington. I am the treasurer of Grace United Church of Christ, which is in the borough, eighteen Court Street. And I am a support church for Family Promise. My question to Angela is, Angela, in the past, my church has been a support church for you. And we come in and we supply food, company, we've also chaperoned. Could you please explain whether or not, under your new model, whether or not church people will be able to come in and, and, and make these people feel comfortable? Have you eliminated the things that we do?
I did not, no.
Could you explain, cause I know we're not able to overnight chaperone anymore.
Yes.
What is it that we can do now that we, that, that we weren't able, that we were gonna do before?
You can still offer companionship, you can still come and make meals, you can still have events at your church and have family events for our families to attend. You can still do mentorship, you can still do career training. Uh, you can do crocheting if you want for afternoon, uh, with our families. Um, nothing is changing but the, the, the structure.
I assume that during the pandemic, we're not allowed to eat with the families anymore?
Right, families are not allowed to eat.
After the pandemic, are you expecting us to be, to come in and bring out children with us so we can play with their children, with the, with the families that are there? Is that, is that expected, is it in the future?
Um, that's the hope, is to, um, get it back to what it used to be. Uh, or make little tweaks, uh, where necessary. Um, but the core of the model is wanting to stay safe and wanted to have that compassionate touch with our church, um, uh, members and the community that is so helpful to us in our areas.
We have quite a few people in that church, members of that church who were served tough by Family Promise. And that, I feel like the, the, the Grace United Church of Christ has a strong relationship with Family Promise, especially in the Christmas time. We've enjoyed bringing gifts home, is that gonna change? Are we just, are you still expecting your, your support churches to supply holiday things for them?
Yes, sir. Um, thank you guys so much. Uh, you guys helped fifty-four families with Christmas gifts last year. It was really appreciated, the year before that, fifty-seven families, and though that will not be changing.
Thank you.
Well, I wanna see the first thing you appreciate.
Hi, I'm Christina, of Los America, eleven, New York Avenue. Uh, my first question is, I know it's scary for certain county residents, will we ever place anybody outside of County Council?
Um, so we don't make that decision, but all of our funding, whatever funding we get, is only from the county, so rental assistance or anything else that we get is only for highly impacted, only kids with that. And now a family can decide when out of Hunter County, but we can't service them.
Okay, so let's go back. Okay, my next question is, do we stipulate on having five-year lease? Do you anticipate in the next five years that ever having to place anybody outside of County Council in that timeframe? For example, uh, the family is currently in Hunter County, but say, uh, you know, uh, father has custody and, you know, and then they have to move here, well, that, but cause typically they might have dual custody or change custody, so that, that then is telling.
Uh, so that's clearly up to the family and where they want to live, um, if someone is from Hunter.
We don't have any guidelines or stipulations around.
We can't, we can't tell family what to do, no. We don't have that kind of control over family responsibility, always lies in the family. All we do is, um, to help them become housed or sheltered or get, you know, mental health treatment or um, connect them to the services that they need to be securely housed. But whatever family decisions that they make, it's still be their family opposition.
Can I ask one question between, I think that, are you trying to, uh, clarify whether a family who happens to be from out of town, when you do your investigation of a family, do you know who they're associated with, such as what you're discussing, a father that's in another county or anything like that?
So the only service who comes to us.
Okay.
So if a father is not in another county, he won't be serviced by us.
Okay.
Well, I'm just getting this mentioned before, the, the, you only mentioned one hundred and fifty-two family, you never mentioned any other local families specifically, so that's why I asked you to work with other families outside of Hunter County. I know your base is out of Hunter County, but I.
No, we serve, well, we serve Hunter County, uh, and whoever is in Hunter County.
Uh-huh, and then my next question is, are you aware of any other properties on the New York Avenue that are multi-family?
Oh, I'm not familiar with New York Avenue.
Okay.
Thank you.
I mean, I just wanna cut in front of that, like, Sharon Ryder, thirty-five Elbert Avenue. At this point of clarification, so no one will be helping you with that?
No.
That sounds like a fire hazard for fourteen people. And then, uh, so there's two bedrooms upstairs and two bedrooms downstairs, no living area, no dining area. So, uh, when they're there all weekend, uh, where are they gonna comfortably or be?
So they can't congregate. Uh.
Or they're gonna be in a built-in facility.
Right, so they'll be in their own separate rooms.
They'll stay there.
Yes, um, and that's the same as it, as it was before. Now, they, they, they're not confined, this is not for them. All right, well, so they'll be able to say, hey, I wanna go to my friend's house for the weekend, and then they'll go to my friend's house for the weekend. Or hey, you know, churches say, hey, come, come, come to the movies, or come to me at my house, which happens. And then they'll go swimming at your house, uh, at someone's house. And the goal is to make someone feel as normal as possible, so no one is confined. Also, it doesn't, it's rarely, I've been here almost four years, I think it's been once when we hit fourteen people. So it's not like fourteen people just moving around like the subway, it's not like that at all.
Cause as I'm thinking.
Right.
Fourteen people or, or sixteen or two bedrooms. But now you'll offer this settlement, uh, coming to the church, that the people could come and like dance to the church.
Where do they play, in the bedrooms or? No, not in our facility, in theirs.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I, I am concerned with the little children outside in this big access parking lot, and that's, that's. Mary J, forty-six, fourth street. Forty-six, fourth street. Um, I just wondered, on the weekend. Um I just wondered, on the weekend.
Mm-hmm.
The people are going to be there all day long, correct?
If they if they choose to.
They choose, yes. Do they have to stay in the house or are they going to be allowed to just?
They don't have to stay there.
Okay, they have to go, they can go out.
They can go out, they can go to the park, they can go grocery shopping.
They can do it, they can hang out on the at the house.
Yes.
If they wish.
They can they can hang out where they are, it's if they, you know, they can live where they are if they want to. Or they can, you know, do the things that they have to do, they they are, these are, I don't wanna se- segment the population to say them versus us. The same thing we do on the weekend, the same thing.
They can they can just stay at the house if they will.
Yes, yes.
Will there be uh two people monitoring them just on the weekend?
Just twenty-four hours supervision, but they're there, someone is there, and that's our statement, they herself.
And what happens if a person, one of the people say calls out, that's uh one of the supervisors? Do you have replacements for those?
Will you run like any other employment agency?
Okay.
We will call in replacement or I mean, I'm not against calling myself, I've done shifts. All of us have done these shifts, we have slept over, I've slept in the bed this year, so it's I I don't foresee that part of it being such an issue. Uh yeah, but I just do really wanna get across the idea of these are not like uh these are not separate people, these are us, we are the people. And I don't think that they need to be uh other or thought about differently than anyone else.
Well, I think what I'm sensing a little bit, I think I think that uh the only the only issues is it's a residential area.
Mm-hmm.
And you have people who are finding.
Let's make sure we stand with questions.
I'm sorry, yeah, and then so I just I just want to know that the people that are going to be in the facility, are they?
Residents.
Your back your background checks are very, very thorough.
Right, we are a residential facility, so we're residents.
Okay.
Right, so this could, like I said, these are people you see every day, we just can't disclose who they are.
Of course.
Right, but you can be shoulder to shoulder with people that we are helping them with, so I just wanna get that across, these are residents, that's living within a residence.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Wardley, thirty-seven O'Leary. So my question is this, I think you stated that there's two bathrooms for sixteen people, right?
There's two bathrooms for up to fourteen, well, I guess for sixteen people, including the two residents.
You're not gonna make the the supervisors go out.
Sorry, so yes.
So um my question is if I I just can't get this in my head around how this would work, right? With so many people with so many good bathrooms, I lived with four women and I had four bathrooms and there were conflicts. You know, so my question is just, I know you don't have anything in Hunterdon, but you have this family promise have other similar facilities that are working seamlessly that, you know, you could present to us that we would then know that hey, it looks like we could support up to sixteen people.
So I can't speak to other family promises, just to be fair, but for us, um I think that when we say up to sixteen or up to fourteen, I think that's throwing people off because they think that it's gonna be sixteen people, you know, Grand Central Station. That's not what we're proposing. Um by DCA standards, nowhere than eight people could use a bathroom. So the two families downstairs, we use one bathroom, two families upstairs, we use another bathroom. So it could be six people plus one uh staff member, which would probably be more of the dynamic downstairs. And then a smaller rooms would probably be, you know, let's say two two people, um a mom and a child, a mom and two kids, so five people plus one upstairs. And there also is a shower at the day center. So if all else fail fails and they come to us at nine AM and they wanna shower, we have a shower there for them to use and we offer a towel and toiletries and things like that, like that's what happens, it's a full-scale operation, but uh that's pretty much how it's how it works. And we never, we didn't have a problem, even when they trained, like they uh rotated to churches and the churches didn't have showers, they would all come back and use our facility, but then we haven't had a problem.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh Todd Cook, thirty-nine Pennsylvania Avenue. Could you just educate, you you referred to something as the old model, their churches were housing fans, is that still a model today?
No, um not after COVID, that's not a model for us, nor would that be a model for anyone we would ever work.
Okay, and and you also mentioned that you operated out of ten East Main, was that transitional housing or was that your old office?
That was our old office, but they did service our families in in overnight, so they did serve as transitional housing for a couple of weeks of the year.
And and when they serve out of a couple of weeks a year, were there any issues amongst the neighbors at that time? And then you also mentioned that uh no less than seventy employees per day regarding the need for housing, we maintain a waitlist. So with that type of need and this being the only facility in Hunterdon County, is this annexed building the best option or the only option that's presenting itself today?
Um at this point, it is the best option because it's fulfilling what we've always done, which is we're family of fourteen people in town. We always maintain a waitlist, uh not as extensive as this because of COVID, but we are utilizing other methods, like the people who are in our facility are the absolute people who needs to be there. We utilize shelter diversion for some, um calling out their families, doing labor mediation, keeping them housed, paying their arrears, talking, you know, uh doing that type of stuff. Um and then we also um are working with with families to put people directly into housing. So if you're doubled up, like a lot of people are doubling, tripling up in houses, we are moving people, like we have a relationship with Lillos. So we are working with them to get families from the couch to housing so that they won't have to come to this this place. So we kind of do it all, but the focus uh or what everyone knows for is, you know, the common sense of it.
And so then you said that Sylvia, in your tenure with um Family Promise, you haven't had the need for more than fourteen folks in a transitional housing, so you said.
Um.
Yeah, I got confused when you said, I thought there's a.
I think.
You're thinking.
No, 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 I think if the what you was meant was that in a particular spot, you didn't have the need for more than fourteen that didn't have it. But because of the limitations of the the facility that you were in.
Right.
Okay, and uh and have you, in in this process, as you looked at post-COVID world, trying to figure this out, did you seek out or research other perhaps larger properties within the borough or within surrounding area?
Of course.
And then and obviously another kind of.
This is the best option because a lot of our clientele are in Clinton. And a a core part of what we we don't wanna do is uh that we are doing now that that is simply um what we wanna avoid is taking people out of their community where they live and placing them somewhere else, uh we wanna keep people in a in our environment that they're uh used to.
And uh one last question, so with with DCA's excitement and you know, you mentioned that and um say this is a great success and in transition folks out, will this serve as a model to seek alternative houses?
No.
Throughout the world more.
Shelter is not the goal, um housing is the goal. So um my my ultimate goal in life is to house family, not to shelter to the rear or transition, build transitional housing, that's that's never the goal.
Okay, thank you.
Uh Mark Hane, twenty-eight New York Avenue, I have a question.
Let just me one one second, maybe give me a break. Can we can we take a break?
We usually take a break.
Yeah. And and I we're we're come right back to you, but we're not going for.
I was kind of waiting to see if.
Yeah, we're working for a break.
Be done this, you know.
Yeah.
Is there anybody else in the audience?
There's gonna be, there's gonna be.
We took this.
There's gonna be.
Right, well, I'll I'll come back.
Yeah, let's let's give this field a little break for a little.
It's boring.
Get a drink of water.
Right, so five minutes, uh we'll come back, it's nine twenty-one.
Here.
Yeah, I'm here, but we can't hear you very well, very quiet since you came back.
Sorry, I don't have a mic.
There we go, that's better, thank you.
Okay. I can show. Um Ms. Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman.
Yes.
Mr. Leven.
Sir.
Ms. Kaczynski.
Here.
Mr. Clarigo.
Here.
And Ms. McNamara.
Here.
Okay, so we're ready to resume, any questions?
Uh Mark Hane, twenty-eight New York Avenue, uh couple of questions. One, I do intend each person has a background check before they come in. How long is that process? Is it a, like you were saying, you had the fire over at uh your apartment complex and you were looking to get people in places, uh is a background check take a day, a week?
Um it just depends on what we are asking for, um our background can be pretty extensive. Uh of course, we do criminal background, but we can see your addiction history and uh different things like that. Uh but usually it's within a couple of hours, this with this somewhere, well, with this company that we're working with.
Okay, so you'll know if somebody's got a criminal record and absolutely zero.
Yeah, like, yeah, no, we we can't uh because of the children. Um so it's like violent crimes or different things like that, uh drugs or whatever like that, we can't, we won't.
Do it, okay. Uh next question, before you, I know you said you've done infrastructure changes to the building, there's two rooms upstairs, two downstairs, what was it before?
Um it was two rooms upstairs and I believe in um an office and extended, like an extended office downstairs.
So if it was a single family house, would it be like, like say, four people would be living in there? The and what I'm questioning is you're saying fourteen people plus two, maybe sixteen at one time could be max. But the infrastructure of that water sewer has definitely checked out, that that's good from typically the maybe a five-person house now. You're over doubling that, that the infrastructures will check at the borough.
So it's it's so much in there, um I don't know exactly what you're alluding to, but like I can say this, we have had this model for over thirty years in places where there have been four families, volunteers in one bathroom or four families, a volunteer uh in a bathroom with a shower or or, you know, four families with volunteers in no bathroom. And we haven't had an issue, so I don't I don't foresee that.
We're still, you're gonna also meet all 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 requirements and DCA requirements too.
Okay, this is along with the check of the water and sewer, that's true, because it was built X years ago and to make sure that.
Glad to meet them, Scott, for us.
And uh we we answered my question, thank you. I I do appreciate what you're doing, I think it is a good thing for the community. I just questioning if New York Avenue is the right physical spot for, actually I do have a more question. You said people who are in your program are from Flemington, now, would you say Flemington, Flemington Borough? Or Flemington mailing address?
What's the dis- distinction?
Flemington Borough is a little square mile, that's the old bar on town.
Flemington address is important now. The testimony actually went that they serve Hunterdon County. And that there is a particular need in Flemington, but that they serve Hunterdon County.
Correct. I'm just curious if it's Borough or just Flemington mailing address.
No, Hunterdon County.
I'm disappointed that you don't know the difference between the borough and the and the county, no, it's not fun, so you really.
Well, I I I know that that's a stick point with you, that's why.
It's an issue. Yeah, it's an issue with a lot of people, but yeah. Okay, Susan Engelhardt, thirty-sixth Broad Street, Flemington. Um did you pull the construction permit um or the church?
The church.
The church. And that construction permit, I understand, as I said earlier, included um extension of the downstairs bathroom, the upstairs bathroom is already a a full three-piece. Did the construction permit include the breaking up of the large downstairs area, each of the two rooms, the?
Okay, so just for clarity, we did not pull any permits and we did not do any work to the upstairs bathroom as of yet.
I I didn't say that.
Uh it's not a three-piece, it's a two-piece, is what I'm saying upstairs, it will be if this, you know, given that this process go through, then we will do the permits to do that, right now, all the permits was pulled by Calvary.
Okay.
And the work is done by Calvary, that's not Family Promise.
Okay, so the so the permits were pulled by Calvary and the permits were applied for the local construction official has reviewed this building for fire, um escape, um distance, everything. You you're not in you you're not.
That's Calvary.
It would be everything.
Yes, they were meeting with fire marshal and the code and code and all of that, that's not Family Promise. Family Promise says you have to do anything until this approval goes through or not, then we will do that part of it, but this is.
But the renovations have been done.
Yes, but it's Calvary, not by us.
But they're not, the renovations have not been completed.
Yes, not by Family Promise.
There was there was some word that it started, but there's it's not completed. It's gonna be subject to building permits and CO and DCA.
So you pulled the, you did the construction prior to the home permit staying filled, I don't understand.
There's certain construction started, interior construction started.
Mm-hmm.
But has not been completed.
Mm-hmm.
And it's still going to be subject to building permit review and construction.
Okay.
Okay, I'm hearing something from the back that's saying uh the plumbing and electrical was.
Wait, hold on, hold on, what are you what are you responding to? I'm not asking that, I don't need that answer, thank you though. The 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 work that you're doing in the other church, the local churches of the prior model.
Mm-hmm.
That model completely goes away, so there won't be anybody staying overnight in the churches anymore at all. Okay, um but and those churches have larger occupancy allowances, obviously, because there are assembly spaces as opposed to a single-family.
No, so when we house in church, we were under the fire are are marshal uh rule of hospitality rooms and it was still fourteen people or or families.
But the but the rooms they were in were for an occupancy for auxiliary facility within the churches, whatever church you're in.
It just depends because they were at Lebanon Baptist Camp and it was about the same size as the rooms that we had at the Promise Center.
Okay, alright, and you don't, you said you mentioned you do not have the percentage of local borough residents that that utilize uh this facility? You didn't have that information, if I remember right.
Yeah.
The facility or the services?
The services, I should say, services. In general, you don't know the percentages of borough residents versus Hunterdon County.
Um I didn't, I didn't think it was necessarily cool.
Uh I think it is, I think it is a, I think it is a an important. Um I think it actually would help your argument if you had that information on here to know what your percentages are, to be honest with you. Did you get HPC approval for the four windows that were like um that work out? Yeah, just know, I can tell you that. Um the the weekend hours, I didn't notice, I I just realized that the weekend hours is basically twenty-four hours, right? It's like a Saturday morning, it doesn't stop at nine, there they have the excess, this is what they held there, but then you got four, five parking spaces, did you submit, did you submit the loads for the parking? On Sundays, I guess, that's my, is there a site plan submitted with the loads of the of the existing facility? In in addition to the four or five that you provided?
We we provided a an exist, a a pre-existing survey of the property that included that, that's that's all that we we supplied.
I saw that. Yeah, I didn't see the number of parkings. Yeah, I didn't see the number of parkings, it's still unneeded on that.
Right, but, but I, I think the testimony is that they're, they're getting four or five, but if they, if they don't need them or if it's an issue, they're just gonna transfer from, uh, the, the.
Yeah, I think the planner could probably address how many are, um, are, you know, are, are available, okay, um, I think that's just a whole, oh, you mentioned, you answered an earlier comment, you said you weren't looking in other locations, within the borough?
Um, within the county.
Within the county, how, did you look for any other locations in the borough?
Um, I actually didn't look for this one, Father Ritter came to me with a proposal to do this, uh, because he knew that we had, that families within his congregation or within the community needed assistance, so Father Ritter came to me and that's how this came about.
Right, I remember that testimony, no, so it testified that the, this D C A program, it, this seems to have taken, how long did this take you to kind of, how long did this whole D C A program take you to kind of, when did you first have to file it, and how long ago did you have this started with the D C A, I guess, is my.
Uh, so this is not a D C A program?
I'm sorry, but, maybe I didn't.
They're just funding the, um, the construction to bring it up to like, uh, standards, I guess?
Okay.
Uh, so this is what we've always done, this is our, uh, presidential support program, uh, we just applied for funding when we uh, tried to least create.
It's kind of like a regular thing, you apply, if this isn't a special program specific, no, in this situation, you apply for funding from D C A as you need it for all your programs, that's what you're saying, for rental assistance programs, okay, and this would be part of that, okay, that's, I, that was a little confusing, I didn't quite understand how that, how that worked. Thank you.
I think you're right here.
Online, online.
Oh, my, my, sorry, online? There's Sharon Harden?
Yes, there's two, yes, yes, Sharon.
Hello? Hello?
Right.
Hi, Nancy Schremerhorn, forty-one Maple Avenue, homeowner, are the, there's a lot of talk about these kids, little children, concerned they're gonna be playing out in the driveway or in the road, but will there also be the possibility there would be teenage children as well?
Um, it just depends on the family makeup, so, and they're very well can be a thirteen year old and eleven year old and things like that, yes.
Thank you, um, is there's gonna be any laundry facilities provided in this, uh, building besides the two bathrooms and the small bedrooms and the minimal kitchen?
Uh, no, ma'am.
No laundry, hmm, okay, um, I'd like to know, will there be a curfew?
Uh, yes, so the way it runs, lights out by ten, everyone is in by ten unless they have a job that requires them to be out later, which, uh, we will allow that family to be, uh, but everyone is in, in, in place by ten.
Okay, so I'd like to hear more about how the comings and goings of this group are being controlled, for example, is the door, are the doors left unlocked and then at ten they lock? Um, who has, is it a key access or a code access, and who has the keys, uh, you know, how, how is that managed?
Um, and so, again, the way we work and have always worked is only staff members have, um, key files or codes to the doors, uh, we have security doors, uh, just because we have to have them, so no one is, uh, coming out, uh, coming in and out, um, we are aware of their schedules at all times, and so we know when each family is coming in, uh, and then they have a number, we have a a cell phone where they call it and they can say, well, I get off to work at this time, uh, or, you know, what have you. Uh, so that's the way it always works, but I just, I, I, I really wanna be careful with allowing families to go in and out as if we're holding them captive or this is some type of, this is something other than what it is, uh, this is a transitional housing facility with our neighbors, we are neighbors helping neighbors, these are people free to do what they want to do, it's free to, they free to shop, they are not in prison, they're not to be treated any differently than any of us, they are human beings, we're not holding them captive, they are not locked inside until we give them a key, they are families and they are doing what they need to do during the day and they will be sleeping there at night, that's it.
Okay, so the doors are locked at, at ten o'clock at night?
Unless the doors are locked at all times, it's not free access, a person can ring the bell and via security, we can see who it is and we can let them in, and they're part of the program, if not, they're not, uh, and that's basically how it is, um, but again, this is a free will program.
Okay, thank you, so if there's anything that would constitute a neighborly behavior, um, who takes responsibility for correcting that? I mean, if the neighbor observes something they would consider a neighborly, you know, noise violation, I don't know, whatever, would they call you or do they call the church, do they call the police, like, how do, how does that kind of thing get taken care of, you know, in a neighborly way?
Um, so it depends on which way it goes, because they are, you are their neighbors too, so you might be doing something that they don't like as well, so, um, I just wanna, you know, put that into play because I don't want it to be part of the conversation that just because they're in this place, they're gonna be a problem because they're any different than you, so it'll be handled in a neighborly fashion, you can talk to people, or if you feel more comfortable, you can talk to Morell, or if you feel more comfortable, you can talk to me, but these are people that's approachable, these are not people that are going to be loud and partying, this is not a frat house, um, this is not any of that, so if you see something happening with your neighbor on the other side of the street, the same thing you would do with that person, you would do with these families.
Um, are there going to be security cameras on both the front and back doors?
Yes.
Thank you, and was the idea, whose idea was it to run this like a four-family, uh, transitional home versus something like a two-family, which would fit more in keeping with the intensity and character of the neighborhood, uh, housing nearby?
Just to object to the question because it assumes that that's the case, but is, is there a reason why you have four families instead of two families?
Because that's what our model have always been in Hunterdon County and Flemington for the past thirty-two years.
And the, and the house can accommodate four families?
Yes, sir.
And it, and you'll comply with all of the local and state codes that allow for four families to be served?
Yes, sir.
And you're not, not increasing the size of the structure at all?
No, sir.
It's still gonna look like the single family house?
Yes, sir.
Was the original idea for family promise coming into this building to be office space only, or was it always going to be housing?
For transitional housing for displaced families.
Okay, thank you.
Hi there, um, this is Nicole Barrick, so, um, I am a direct neighbor of the church at thirty-eight Broad Street, um, I have a few questions. Uh, first one, I just wanna reconfirm that from a resident perspective, um, a child must be part of the family in order for them to receive occupancy in this, uh, annex, correct?
Um, so, yes, but, well, okay, so yes, we take families, women and children, uh, men and children and things like that, but if we have space and we have a single mom, so if there's a state in Hunterdon calls us and we have a, a space and they said, can you take this mom? I think she's out of danger and she could be, um, better supported by you, or if we get social services say, we have a single woman who could be better supported by you, uh, and she may be pregnant or not, but, you know, a single woman, if we have space, we will take a single woman, the only thing, the only, um, um, person we can't take is a single male, just because it's not allowed, um, in a family shelter.
So fair to say that it, it, it's your goal to actually serve families, then that it's more advantageous for everybody if there's space for you to have a, a woman and possibly a father and child as opposed to just a single woman?
Yes, and right now, we are only, we have four families, like, we are only serving families at the moment, at this time.
Okay, thank you, um, so mention that, um, you have a waitlist, could you, um, share with us how many people are currently on your waitlist?
Um, I didn't, the case manager was out and I did not, uh, go over that, excuse me.
So can you tell us maybe on average, how many people you normally have on your waitlist?
Um, it, it just depends, uh, so, post-COVID, uh, things are really different, uh, so we can have about seven to ten people on our waitlist, uh, and now that, that means people who called in, they may need our services, but everyone on the waitlist does not necessarily need, uh, residential support, once we start talking to them, we can do a diversion, a diversion, uh, which we could divert them from having to come in and work out with their landlord if they can stay there until we can find them housing and we call our residential landlords, or, uh, or if they can stay with their friends or, or different things like that, so it's, it's, it's things that happens before someone is able to come actually into the facility, uh, the people who come in the facilities have no supports and they need, uh, and they need, you know, wraparound supports in order to, uh, become sustainable, and, and so that's, that's what it really is.
Okay, yeah, I was more, most interested in how many people that you have on your waitlist that obviously need residence, uh, support, so, um, okay, you don't have. Um, so, the question was just asked, and I, and I understand you're passionate about, um, ensuring that we understand that these are neighbors, um, just like us, um, unfortunately, they are transient neighbors, so this is not, uh, like somebody we would get to know over a period of time. So the question that was previously asked, I don't think I heard an answer to, but I also had the same question with regard to how do we handle situations where um, protection of our property or damage to our property, are we supposed to go to the police, you, the church, what's the resource we have?
I think it's already been answered, asked and answered.
I can't hear you.
Certain times at this point, if you're living in your community that are temporarily displaced, but there are people that are in your community, and then if there is.
But I thought, well, that's not my question.
I'm not done, and if there is a problem, you can contact either them to, as a neighbor to talk to them, or you can contact, uh, Calvary Church, or you can contact Family Promise, um, uh, so, this is no different than anybody else living next door to you, these are people.
Well, I understand that, but again, as I said, this is, this is not a neighbor that you get to know over a period of time or an extended period of time. In, in, in conjunction with that question and that response, um, I just wanna make sure it's clear that with the rate of turnover that you indicated, which is basically a thirty to ninety day stay, correct, that's what.
Can we make it a question or save it for another time, please?
I am asking a local question, excuse me, I, I did ask a question, was the response thirty to ninety days for, um, a stay per family, that's the average? That's what you guys wouldn't, would expect?
Um, it's not a rate of turnover, um, it's, uh, um, our length of staying that we, uh, until we transition someone into housing, so it's not turnover, it's sustaining a family.
Understood, um, from a neighbor perspective, we would look at it as turnover of residents.
Yeah, that's not what it is.
So, but Abby, in that timeframe, on the shorter end of that, that could mean as many as forty-eight families move through that facility in a year, is that correct?
That is not correct, we have never helped forty-five families in a year, on most, even in a COVID year, sheltering people at hotels, uh, the number is twenty-two and that's a record, on average, we help at least ten to, uh, maybe thirteen families a year.
Okay, thank you for that, um, so, my next question is, um, around the cameras that you indicated, so there's cameras that are in the front and the back of the property, um, are those facing the doors, um, or, or are they facing out from the building?
Um, I would know when we start to do, uh, the work, what is the best, uh, positions for those cameras, I don't, I haven't done any work on Calvary and so I don't know the property well enough to tell you exactly where the, uh, cameras will be positioned, but I can tell you that they will be there.
For security purposes?
Yes, for security purposes.
Yep, totally understand, unfortunately, my backyard also is, uh, connected to the, um, to the, uh, parking lot, so I am concerned about my privacy of my backyard and how you're going to ensure that you're not recording my, my, uh, property.
Wait for.
Perhaps, uh, the question is.
Do you have an answer to that, how are you gonna protect my privacy?
We don't plan on shining a camera into your backyard, it's for the doorway, the door entrance way.
So, so it will not be facing my backyard?
It's not going to be intentionally, you know, people, people may have, um, the door ringer, ringer, uh, cameras on their doors, does that shine into a street in a neighborhood? That, that potentially does, but there's not going to be an intentional invasion of privacy, this is for security of a doorway, um, and for the people, uh, that aren't living, so, um, there's, there's no invasion of your privacy.
All right, well, I'll, I'll leave it at that, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, so, Mike, you had a question?
Yes, Jim, uh, two questions, the potential of sixteen people living there.
Sixteen people will not be living there.
Okay, fourteen, what is the plan for the trash and recycling?
Oh, me, I'm sorry, uh, so we are working that out with Calvary, we're either, either going to share a dumpster or we're gonna get our own and, uh, recycle as per what the town requires, we're not, you know, we're not gonna.
Plan is to use the Calvary dumpsters.
Right, like. We can use the Calvary dumpsters, but we may need to get our own, depending on how much trash is accumulated and then we'll pay for that service, um, but we wouldn't know if we need our own until we get it, uh, but right now, we are planning to utilize the, um, the networks that Calvary, uh, is currently utilizing.
Okay, and my last question is, if another, another Ida happened, and the house becomes uninhabitable, where are those people going?
Uh, so our families are going to go, uh, shelter in place in hotel motels, um, like they did before.
Okay, thank you.
Anna, you have a question?
Hi, thank you again, um, and I'm, I'm, thank you again for your time and your work, um, and I'm sorry if I'm being repetitive with this question and I know it's, 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 um, a long one, but I just, well, a little clarification if possible, um, just with the timeframe, what, what on average, if you have an average on that, for how long a family might stay, um, before they're able to, to move on and, and find what they need, do you know?
It just depends.
It depends, yeah.
It, it depends on the families, um, we find families, uh, that are so ashamed, uh,
Yeah.
to come in, that they stay in their car for four months before they call us, so you could imagine the trauma of that person due to the stigma of having to come to a place like us because they're so ashamed of it, that the trauma of that family will probably be more than ninety days, um, versus a family who comes to us right away, um, and part of what we're trying to do is de-stigmatize people who need help, uh, so the sooner you come in, the sooner we can help, but it really depends on the crisis of a family.
Right, right, okay, thank you, thank you for that, Claire.
Any other questions from the public, your hand is still up, that's what I was wondering. I take it that there are no more questions, uh, this time, and I think probably, instead of putting your planner on, uh, we should. stop the the hearing for tonight, hold it over until the next meeting. We still have a lot of business to uh to do for the planning board.
Understands, okay.
So.
Are we unavailable for the 28th?
Yeah, so. I mean, I know we have other things on the agenda. We have two completeness issues. We could just. We have two completeness issues, uh, the continued public hearing for Captiva, but that may not actually. They've indicated they might continue again.
Okay.
Um, and then it would just be this.
Yeah, we can't do the 28th hearing right now. Little little bird just whispered in my ear.
A tall bird. So the next is July 12th. Next is July 12th.
Okay, so for everybody in this room, everybody on the screen, this matter will be adjourned and carried to the next meeting of the board scheduled for July 12th. So not the next meeting, which is June 28th, but the meeting after that, which is July 12th. No additional notice, um, and we will begin with the applicant's plan.
At 7:00 P.M.
And any necessary questions before that?
If if folks are leaving, if I could ask you to to leave so that we can work to the rest of our.
Okay, um. Yeah. Just want to make sure folks, both of you, right? We're good? Yes.
And the mayor has not returned?
Mayor has not returned. But I just want for purposes of the minutes, uh, myself and Mr. Cook have come up to the dais. All right. Item nine on the agenda or is uh share items. Okay, so I've got um few things. Uh, we kind of said this before, but I just want to make sure that everyone's got this. Um, this Family Promise is being carried over to July 12th, okay? Want to make sure, um, just to say for the folks who are participating, whoever's watching, recording, right? Um, that you're able to be there on July 12th, uh, to continue that uh matter. I I I will be honest with you, Captiva is unalived. I mean, we don't we carry it to the next meeting, but I my guess is that it'll probably be carried again. I just have a, in my gut, I'm feeling that it's going to get carried, but I don't want to say that for sure.
You never know.
You never know. Um, I don't think we're gonna get paramount from the informal. I don't think we're gonna see that. We'll see that application, but I, it's clearly that there's some sort of timeliness that's on theirs, but I think that but they're not gonna get in for the next meeting because they it's not the time. In fact, the code official determines that they need a site plan based on what uh the informal had tonight. Um, I will say for the record, if they do come before the board with site plan, we will need another planner um because Beth has let us know that there is a conflict with her firm. Um, but it may not come to us, so we'll deal with that when it comes. We also have um on our next agenda, next meeting's uh agenda, a completeness determination of the 144 Main Street. That's that's Millie's brunch net.
Yes.
That's completeness and only for that hearing. I believe uh we got a review letter, it was already been issued for that one. Uh, there was correspondence from Water and Sewer and I believe the Fire Marshal as well. We got letters on all of those for that application for completeness. Um, and I do know that they also want to move on that one forward. My guess though is that one may be another meeting out. It's not gonna be by the way, but we'll we'll get there with them.
It would it would be difficult even if there's some completeness items.
Yeah.
Box letter.
So my 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 guess is that we would probably see uh that one, we probably wouldn't have a hearing until the earliest would be the second meeting in July, but my guess it might be past that. Uh, just so, just for everyone's verification. And then we have, we heard from 37 Main Street, have they come back with anything yet or no?
No, they're not. They're going to do a few more uh salt tests. I think it was going to be scheduled. Um, but we also have completeness for the Wurtsville properties.
Oh, right, sorry.
June 28th.
Right, for June 28th, we've got the completeness. So that is that flag shaped lot next to Shammy Shine, uh, that's behind some some structures there and they're looking to do uh and that's completeness only, right? Yes.
Yeah, I'll try and have that report out next week sometime.
Right, and that is a proposal for 18 townhomes. On the south side of Parker Avenue, otherwise known as 12. So um, so we have a lot of stuff coming up. Um, so definitely stay on top of it because it's the summer and people tend to take vacations and things. You're allowed to take vacations, you're encouraged to take vacations. I want to just make sure that as soon as you know about travel plans, you let Abby know so that we can make sure that we've got warm and everything taken care of. I will tell you that I know my own personal schedule. The second meeting in July, I have, I am, I will be in Maine. That day, I will be Bethel, Maine, which means no internet. So don't, don't count on me for that. It better than Acadia, but because there's internet in Bar Harbor, but once you're in the park, there's.
26th.
That's the 26th, I'll be, I'll be up in the mountains somewhere, so.
Okay. Yeah, I I will be away the 23rd of August, that's the 6th.
23rd of August, okay.
So we'll see where we are when we get there.
Right.
I'll be away the 26th of July.
Uh, July, okay. This is why I'm asking now, because I want to make sure that as we've got these applications coming in, you are stepped out.
I haven't planned a vacation yet, but I could plan on one. At some point.
You should take your vacation. So uh, I would say, uh, we can, we can always get Rebecca or somebody else to.
Yes.
So, so please take a vacation.
Jeff, if you're collecting dates, I'm. I'll be away August 9th. Is that, that's the second, we're doing second Tuesday, right? That month?
Yeah, correct.
So I'll be away August 9th.
Okay.
And I mentioned I'll be gone the next week.
Right, and Susan's not here the next meeting, which was uh.
28th. I I might be able to call in. Carry you to the 23rd. August 23rd, August 24th.
Okay. And all right, so I just wanted, I wanted to get through all that. Master plan? Okay. Okay, master plan? He sounds with teacher voice, I have a voice.
So I'm sorry that I've been just running behind the last time we asked you that. It's coming very soon. Um, I think I can honestly say this time, it's coming very soon. And why don't I, I know you're not asking me this, but we put on the record that by the time we have our meeting in two weeks, we'll have a substantive submission for master plan.
Sounds good. All right, um. That's it, it's on the record, now she's, now she's committed to it. All right. There's that, um, uh, for 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 uh that. There are, uh, the mayor mentioned a signed redevelopment agreement with uh for Liberty Village. So we know that that process is moving forward, although they've actually doubt, I mean, they're very, they're not really come to us for anything else. Liberty Village is.
No, but I think they're.
It's all at council level now, right? Because we did cite, we give them the approval.
Yeah, that trajectory is that they will, what's that? The the trajectory is that um now that they have that redevelopment agreement, they have, I or the mayor, they still have to go through a financial agreement process with the council.
Right.
Um, the redevelopment agreement requires that they submit a site plan essentially to council for consistency determination, which is similar to what occurred with the Courthouse Square redevelopment project. Once that consistency determination is completed, at that point, I think the uh they then have the opportunity to come here for the site plan.
Right. Right, because we, because we 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 did the redevelopment plan, we did it through the site plan. So that's down the road, but it's out there. I just want to make sure that everyone's aware of that.
Yeah, we're gonna see that this year, I'm sure.
Okay. Um, and then um other things that were floating out there. There was a question about Spice Factory, did that get solved? Or there was something that you were researching, someone was researching something about.
They are coming in with the compliance plans.
Okay.
With the phase one and two to get a compliant. And then I understand they want to come back with an amended plan. They want to get started with phase one, once they have met compliance, and then they want to come back with amended plan.
Phase two, okay. And that is, so that's in process and we should expect to see that sooner than later.
Compliance part is in process, the, what your schedule is for the coming back with the amendment.
Okay, sure, okay.
Can I, can I ask something? In regards to that Spice Factory, uh, Beth and I had a conversation online that we wish that that entire corner from the, from 31 all the way to the Spice Factory was declared an area need and that we grabbed that that walled room site, put a hotel on the corner and all that stuff. Is that something that we can kind of address or, you know, kind of have a find out if the applicant's interested in expanding their project?
You can always, right? You can always talk to them, you can also also put in the master plan.
Yeah. By the time we put in the master plan, the application will be in. So that's why I'm saying do we be proactive and maybe talk to the applicant about whether they're interested in something like that. So folks, so yes, I think during the application, you know, he's asked the question, it is a real idea to put the master plan in by the time that occurs, the the application hasn't approved yet. I will say, I also suggested the engineer in in chatting with them, hey, why don't you guys buy some of these friendly properties? You could do something really special here. And he didn't disagree, but he he did say that uh they're just not currently going in that direction due to
Money.
Condition, money and availability. I and I just kind of exposed that conversation that you and I had behind the scenes. I mean, it's really awkward, not really awkward, but it's somewhat an awkward shaped property.
Yeah, but there's the, there's the old, there's the old writing there that there's, there's. Listen, wouldn't it be the kicker if the writing came down and they put back a movie theater with a full circle over that corner? Wrong. Yeah, close it. Um, all right, um.
Yeah, you sent an email about open container thing and I said, yeah. You care about how to address.
Open container, yes. You were gonna, you had two things there, open container and.
Was it very pretty quick?
Yeah, I was gonna do other professional reports.
I thought that was, I thought that's you that.
No, 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 that's, that's what works.
I'd wait for that.
And then the other thing, uh, and the mayor mentioned this before, but I just want to, just again to to elevate it. The um, uh, the, one of the canvas uh medical dispensaries that has approval is going, once they get open in the Shoppies, they're gonna come, they have part of the front, well, it's the Shoppies. Once they get. Shoppies, Oldie Shoppies. Once they are, they have their approval for medical, if they want to go for commercial retail, they have to come in for a site plan, which is part of the state regs. So that will come at some point, but again, I just want to make sure that we're aware of all these things that are hanging out there.
Which storefront is it?
I don't remember which one it is, yeah. It's not, it's not on the end, it's somewhere in the middle, I think.
And it's not the old, the restaurant there, Pressco?
No, no, it's not, it's not the standalone, it's in the strip, I just forget which one of the 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 regs have some particular security requirements, so there was some reason why they were in the particular spot that they were, they don't remember which one it was, yeah. So that's out there. The other thing, and Susan and I were talking about this, uh, just just to put it out there, there might be some transportation infrastructure funding.
Yeah, actually I have that on my list.
Go ahead.
I can go on that. I have four quick things. The one was I sat in on a webinar and I could talk to Beth and care about this as well for your suggestion. Um, there's a, there's a a federal program that's called a set aside alternate transportation grant. It's 80% federal, 20% gets matched by the state D O T, so it's 100% matched. I had, did a little more research and I think the mayor thought this was something that we were already going after. And after speaking to Beth, I do not think that she, I don't think she's got the the, I don't think we're talking about the same grant. So I'm gonna do a little more research and see if we can figure this out. But basically, it's a grant to go after um as anything as mundane as walk paths, bike paths, but as interesting as uh railroad history and and things like that. So we'll see where how that goes, but that webinar was interesting. Um, the, I wanted to mention, I mentioned last meeting, is anybody interested in sitting in on an E V ordinance writing meeting? We'd really appreciate if somebody volunteers to do that. I didn't know if anybody is doing that, please check your email again. Need information on it, get to me. Um, there, the council announced that they're doing a, this is the third thing, uh, the council announced they're doing a traffic study on a couple, three, three there was three particular uh streets that they mentioned. They hired C M E for it. Um, it would be really nice, and there's no mayor here and there's no council here, but it would be really nice if we got C M E to be coordinating with uh our traffic engineer as well as one or two of the planning board members so that we can at least feed to them our thoughts prior to C M E actually writing their report or even doing their research, just get a little feedback from us would be nice to get a nod. And then finally, I'm gonna pass to Todd. Todd and I and Hannah, well, today, I'm sorry, I can't figure out why this is beep beep, I have a third off. Um, my kids just wanted to go to bed. Um, this morning, Hannah, Todd and I all uh did the South End Walk Audit with the um F C P. Really interesting, I'll let Todd kind of download that. There's another session on Thursday in the afternoon, if ever, anybody's interested in joining. Late afternoon, evening, yeah, sorry, um, if anybody's interested in joining that, that's good.
Yeah, I mean, just as a, as a quick, uh, just so, so we all know, because I think we talked about it before the last time. Uh, the borough, really in conjunction with the F C P, applied and got this N P P grant, the Neighborhood Preservation Program. It was one of the largest grants that I've seen the borough get, or something of this, of this film. And it covers the South End, uh, which we now understand is really Maple Avenue on South. And uh, really interested, you know, you you had about 20 stakeholders invited today from all sorts of groups, residents, business owners, uh, police officers, uh, other, other executives. And really it was to audit that area from a walkability perspective. And it opened my eyes because we're, we often drive everywhere, right? Even as borough residents, I mean, I walk, but I'm not sure I've walked those streets and those sidewalks. And really, the objective was simple, to document and audit the entire area from a SWAT analysis perspective with regards to pedestrian um accessibility, comfort, uh, aesthetics, overall connectivity to the borough. And really, it's all to have community involvement to prioritize this really large grant over the next five years. What are the short wins, what are the long wins? So the F C P can then go to the council and say, here's our list. Some of them are as easy as repainting curbs and some of them are as difficult as building a bridge. So really, really neat. And um, if anybody was volunteering on the Thursday night, I think you'd really enjoy it because I think we all had, I know Anna and and Susan and I really enjoyed it.
Thank you.
And uh, one, one other question.
We got to see him, he's gay.
Yes.
He was surprisingly quiet the whole time too, it was great.
He was. So and and just, just a question, I know it's under chair rooms and it may be out of order, but uh while I recuse myself from the uh uh Courthouse Square, uh, are there meetings going on? It wasn't this award, it says, was to have like regular meetings? There, there was one. Okay, so that is have, that was part of the resolution that I heard, just as a recused member of.
It was only one, you mean with the.
But they're also, they also have to come back to us because they're, they have to amend a, their site plan. And it's in process.
But that's different than what Todd's looking at.
I I I thought, I was just curious and I, like I said, it might be, I should have added.
They took a three month age, right? Yeah.
Yeah, like it was a monthly thing and I know.
About month, month.
Okay, okay, that's.
I got ripped apart in the paper to recommend putting that in the reservation. I I completely got ripped apart. But in us, in that time, we've had neighbors um not knowing what's going on with with boundary issues. You know, the, there are, there's supposed to be morning meetings and there's supposed to be coordination with the neighborhood and I have seen.
And like I said, it might be out of, out of turn, I was just curious and I could have put up this as a public comment, just curious because I I believe there were supposed to be monthly meetings to update and make sure that things were happening. because I I believe there were supposed to be monthly meetings to update and make sure that things were happening. So.
We did have, we did have one meeting. It was about three weeks ago on seven A M. Susan, the four roads of the traffic study are Broad Street, Stangle, Brown Street, Church and Main, but we're gonna have the Liberty Village developer do that one. I will let C M E know to call Jay Troutman.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
All right.
Could, and because of the chair, Todd, no, I was just gonna say, could could we just ask the bird to do the traffic study for the master plan that we're looking?
Yeah.
I mean, what, I mean, if they're gonna do half the town, then these are.
Yeah.
We can roll it into the master plan. We could take the findings from their thing and use it as as.
Yeah, I was actually gonna ask, so yes, I I mean, I don't know if anybody's joking, but I would like to see the results of the study because they might have master plan implications, and then I wanted to ask you folks that are doing the walk audit, is that gonna have a work product or a conclusion that can be sent from?
I I believe, I don't.
But let me, let me just say F C P, yeah, so timing may not line up.
Fair enough. It's also a five year.
Right.
So they can, yeah, so they have to spend a certain amount of money on projects by the, by December thirty first, and then it's another year, and it's so they have to define projects like, yeah.
Well, then, just for anybody that's participating, any draft deliverables, even if it's not something that can be officially incorporated, there might be information that's worth having.
Yeah, absolutely, and especially from the aesthetic perspective, because there are benches and garbage cans and light posts and all sorts of things in this document, so.
Wonderful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Excellent. All right. Anything else under share items? I know this, this is why we, I said we have to cut off the other thing, because we have stuff to cut through today. And that's okay. So bills were circulated in two batches.
Yes.
Got a motion to audit bills?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion or clarification on the bills?
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Zinghar, yes. Mr. Dachshund?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Ms. Campion?
Yes.
Thank you. Professional reports now. Tara, you had two things.
Yes, I'll be very, very quick. Just two new, one nuts and new came about in January, the other one came about more recently. The governor has indicated that municipalities now have the specific authority to designate open container areas that does not conflict with the 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 state's alcoholic beverage requirements. So each municipality on its own can determine what areas it wants to allow people to walk around with or bring or drink open containers that is not associated with any sort of liquid license issued by the A B C. So.
So you're telling it doesn't have to be, like, attached to a particular bar, distillery, brewery? And it can be literally anywhere.
Literally anywhere.
And is there a, is there a limit to the size of the zone?
See, now you're asking me a lot more than I can talk about, but it's there, but you're looking for that.
Okay, so so theoretically, just one point seven square miles, just like we used to, like, I remember we once had an overlay that covered the entirety of the borough. Remember that? That we could, we could theoretically, the council could adopt an ordinance that could allow for that. Possibly.
Possibly.
We're not, we're not on the record.
Yeah, as far as I know, there's no minimum or maximum. It's an open area.
Interesting.
And and does an open container law with the new marijuana thing also contain, also apply to, is it, is it complete? So having an open container of alcohol is different than having. Okay, just.
Cannabis leg regs are very urban or a bucket.
It's, yes, it's got to be that we not have an additional layer of bureaucracy for that same thing. You need to be hard with your parking stations on time.
So that's the first one. The second one, I actually found very interesting. Apparently, New Jersey was the only state that required a baker to bake anything they're going to sell out of a commercial kitchen. So now they have what they are calling the cottage food business license that allows you to bake at home and sell with the bake at home without doing it.
So so if you were to go, so across the river in Pennsylvania, there are a number of businesses who literally cook in their homes, can pickle preserve whatever in their houses, slap a hand drawn label on it, sell it. It's perfectly legal. Once you're under a certain size and yada, yada, yada. New Jersey, much to.
So now I can take my my cookies to the farmer's market.
You can absolutely take your cookies to the farmer's.
Yeah, garage sale, you can sell them.
That's right. All right. But but only certain families. All right. Excellent. Bob, do anything?
I don't know.
Not, not really, or no?
No.
All right.
I want to congratulate you, the rookie.
You did. Yeah, and it happened. He had, I just wanted to say, he had like thirty minutes notice.
Fifteen.
Yeah.
Give him credit.
I called him in the car. Guess what?
Guess what? Yes, thank you.
I almost turned around.
Beth, do you have anything else?
No.
All right, do we need to go into an executive session? All right, got a motion to adjourn?
Yep.
So moved.
I will say a second.
Well, I didn't know if it's young, I didn't know if it's young.
I'm pretty young.